Start the meeting as always to start with a board prayer and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Valentine, would you please lead us? Please rise.
Let us pray. Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Ms. Wilson, please call the roll.
Certainly. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Ahmed.
Here.
Ms. Boston.
Present.
Mr. Burrows. Ms. Eubanks.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez. Mr. Murray. Ms. Page.
Present.
Ms. Cantero-Scready.
Present.
Mr. Valentine. Mr. Wallace.
Present.
Mrs. Williams.
Present.
Dr. Weisman.
Present.
Dr. Eubanks.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to adopt the October 23, 2018, board meeting agenda as amended? It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Colleagues, may I have a motion to approve the October 11, 2018, board work session minutes?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Thank you. That motion carries. Colleagues, we will now have a news break entitled STEM Scores a Touchdown.
Even if their jerseys weren't numbered and they weren't wearing helmets and pads, the forty Oxon Hill and Thomas Johnson middle school students arriving at the Howard B. Owen Science Center were there to play some football. Selected as STEM All-Stars by Pepco, the event sponsor, the Gridiron Kids faced four challenges: to choose the healthiest kind of sports drinks, to use instant replay to rule on whether a player was in or out of bounds, to calculate a football score, and most daunting of all, to peel a paper football and kick it between the uprights on a paper-covered Field of Dreams.
If you're a kicker, what do you need to know about football? Air pressure! How far it's gonna go! We need to know about velocity, we need to know about math, we need to know about acceleration.
At our engineering station, all the time our kids are getting in trouble for doing the football thing across the desk, right? They have permission to make a football today. They're making their own footballs, they get to choose the different types of paper, they can add tape, use scissors, they can do anything they want. Because in that one, we're trying to teach the engineering design process. STEM is everywhere. And if we can get our students to start seeing STEM outside of school as much as we're showing it to them inside of school, then we've created that lifelong learner. And that's what we want to do in Prince George's County Public Schools, and we want to use STEM to do it.
How'd you get it to work?
I like hit from the bottom, where it was like pointing out, I hit the bottom. So then I thought it would put more like friction in the air and then it would go more farther.
Are you excited to be here?
Yes.
Yeah? Maybe the Redskins will give you a contract after they see what you did here today. Would you like to play someday?
Yeah.
It's really exciting to be able to see kids who are experiencing mathematics and science, but enjoying it. And of course, I can appreciate it because I'm a lover of mathematics. And to see their looks on their face today, to know that they can use mathematics to make decisions and help to create a football that could potentially make a field goal or to make a touchdown through paper and through mathematics is perfect. It's the kind of experience we want our students to have each and every day when they're in the classroom, the connection between the world that they're learning and their real world experience.
Are you a football player yourself?
No, but I like to watch it and my favorite team is the Redskins, so I don't, I play it at school sometimes or when I'm with my cousins or families.
Do you like the STEM program? I mean, because you're at school, do you like it?
Yeah, it's fun because we get to create many things in school and we get to work with our classmates and we get to know each other when we work with them. And we do, we do some stuff, we do stuff that I never knew I was gonna do my whole life before.
At the end of their fourth quarter, the middle school quarterbacks set about opening locked boxes using clues that gathered along the way. The contents of the boxes, it was anybody's guess.
What else do you think is in that box?
Boom!
Kick?
Boom!
Wow! What do you think is in the box? Gift card, certificate, a gift certificate.
A gift certificate, boom!
In fact, the shiny treasure chest contained modern-day gold doubloons in the form of Washington Redskins tickets for each student and a parent. And while some students didn't quite know how to react to their good fortune, Creani Cruz could hardly contain himself, jumping for joy and joining in a chorus of awesomes. Awesome too was the reaction this time at Pointer Ridge Elementary School, where Burlington Stores surprised teachers and students with a check for $10,000. The unexpected windfall, part of Burlington's Adopt a Classroom Outreach Program, will buy plenty of much-needed Chromebooks, LCD players, and other goodies on the school's wish list.
I'm just so happy that the students and the teachers and the staff at Pointer Ridge have gotten some support from the local community. This is what it's all about. And here, our entire village is putting in to make sure that these students succeed.
And Christmas came early for the county's new teachers, too. At the New Teacher Academy's induction day at Henry Wise High School, much coveted school supplies were available free of charge to everybody.
Too often, we have teachers reaching into their own pockets in order to provide for their students. And so, to the extent that the community can alleviate that, is what we're trying to do today.
Organized by school board member Edward Burrows as a follow-up to a similar giveaway at last summer's peep, and supported by local fraternities and vendors, the largess was appreciated by the over 200 teachers, with one item in particular getting gushed over the most.
You would think stacks of paper were cash, because they're really, that's the favorite item by far.
Well, for me, being a music teacher, I'm constantly in need of paper. I'm planning to teach my piano students real soon about composition, so we'll be needing to make copies of staff papers so that they can work on their compositions. And like any musician, you make mistakes. So, when you make mistakes, you need more paper to fix those mistakes.
You know, we might not be able to give them everything today. We know that they deserve to be paid more, but as much as we can do is what we're trying to do today. So, I hope they feel the love, support, and appreciation from their school board and from their school system.
So, thanks to community partners who believe in Prince George's County schools, students and teachers will continue to get the right combinations and unlock the potential in each and every one of them. This is Dave Zarin saying, hail to the Redskins, hail to Creani Cruz, and all of the STEM All-Stars, and to each of Prince George's finest.
It's always an honor and a pleasure to celebrate the great work of our students and our teachers every day, and we love to celebrate the great work of our board members. Again, let's hear for Ms. Ahmed and Mr. Burrows for their tremendous work there. So, folks, what a tremendous crowd we have here today. This is what public education and supporting and advocating for public education is all about. We love to see our community members come out and be ready to express themselves. We have a special board meeting today, and colleagues, I hope you will help me in being just a little flexible with the agenda. We know there are some superstars in the audience, there's a couple of us want to acknowledge, and we'll get an opportunity to do that soon. And we are, at some point, gonna do things like move public speaking up a little bit to make sure that our folks get to hear us. But first, we have a very special guest with us this evening who's gonna come and talk to us. Let me ask, for my folks in the audience, how many people know what the Kerwin Commission is? Raise your hand. A good number of folks, and for those who haven't raised your hands, what an important and critical lesson you're gonna get this evening. We have constantly talked about issues of educational excellence and equity in Maryland. And for the past couple of years now, the Kerwin Commission has been working hard to develop strategies and policy recommendations and formulas to bring every Maryland public school to where it needs to be and to make sure that all of our schools throughout this great state give students what they need each and every day. Now, it's called the Kerwin Commission because it's chaired by Dr. Britt Kerwin, and he happens to be with us here today. First, let's give Dr. Kerwin a round of applause. It's an honor to have you with us here, Dr. Kerwin. I just got to share with the audience, as you stand up, a little bit about you, for those who might not know. Dr. Kerwin is currently chancellor emeritus of the university system of Maryland. He is a nationally recognized authority on critical issues shaping particularly higher, the higher education landscape and the K-12 landscape. Prior to his work at the university system of Maryland, Dr. Kerwin served as president of the Ohio State University and, more importantly, president for the University of Maryland College Park, Go Terps, for 10 years. He started his career as a faculty member at the University of Maryland College Park. So, he is indeed homegrown, and he has worked with a group of some of the most talented and committed educators and policymakers and community activists on the Kerwin Commission. And Dr. Kerwin is gonna talk to us some about that important work, and colleagues will get a chance to ask him questions and engage in dialogue with him. It's my distinct pleasure and honor to introduce Dr. Britt Kerwin. We make sure that blue light is, you gotta push that button.
Ah, now we've got it.
There you go. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that wonderful introduction. And I just thank all of you who serve on this board. What an important responsibility this is. It's, I can't think of anything, any public service that's more important than boards of education, volunteers, serving in this capacity to help improve the quality of education, which is just so vitally important to the future of our state and our country. I really feel, in a way, this is kind of like Old Home Week, because I look out and I see Ms. Ahmad, who served on the Board of Regents when I was chancellor, and we work so very closely together. And Dr. Weisman, who was dean of the College of Education, and she and I have had this wonderful, long-working relationship together. And of course, Dr. Eubanks is now a member of the University of Maryland community. And your superintendent, Dr. Goldson, and I share the fact we're both mathematicians. So, I feel a lot of kindred spirit here at this, at this meeting. I don't know if Mr. Harrington is still in the audience or not, but I was so impressed with him, and I was delighted that he has a scholarship to come to the University of Maryland. And now, we've got to all work to make sure he does exactly that. So, very, very impressive young man. So, I'm thrilled to have this opportunity, and so I'll sort of try to give you in as concise a way as I possibly can, some sense of what the commission is doing, where it is at the moment, where it hopes to get, and of course, be happy to respond to any questions that you might have about our work. So, first of all, it's important to know that the commission, it was created, it's a 25-member commission created by the General Assembly and the governor at the end of the 2016 legislation. And there's lots of where-esses in the establishment of the commission, but it boils down to two things. We were asked to review and update the current funding formula for the schools in Maryland, the so-called Thornton Formula, coming out of the predecessor commission, the Thornton Commission. And secondly, and this is, I want everybody to think about this just a moment, because it's proven to be an enormous challenge for us, develop policies and practices so that Maryland schools perform at the level of the world's best school systems. Not the US, not the best school systems in the US, the best in the world. And I give the governor and the members of the General Assembly a lot of credit for thinking in those terms, because we all know it is a global economy. If we're gonna be competitive, if people are gonna have good jobs, if we're gonna be successful as a state and as a nation, our young people have to be educated as well as young people in the best systems in the world. So, this is, turns out to be a daunting part of our charge, but I think a very important one. Now, the commission is very broadly representative. It includes members of the General Assembly. Incidentally, two members of the Prince George's delegation are on the commission, Senator Paul Pinsky and Delegate Alonso Washington are both members of the commission. You can just see the broad array of groups and individuals represented on the commission. In fact, if you can think of a group that is an affinity group for K-12 education, PTA, they're represented on the commission. State school boards, they're represented on the commission. Superintendents, they're represented on the commission. Collective bargaining units, they're represented on the commission. So, the commission is very broadly representative. And in a way, you can imagine that's both a challenge and a positive, because everybody comes to the commission with a certain, representing a certain group. And so, they're invested in the particular issues of that group. On the other hand, we have to develop a consensus document. So, you've got business leaders with collective bargaining units and PTA, et cetera, et cetera. We've all got to come together on a consensus report. So, that's the composition of the commission. And the first thing we had to do is to learn a good bit about what's, if we're gonna make recommendations so that Maryland will perform at the level of the best performing systems in the world, we have to know where is Maryland now? And so, we've learned, we've learned a great deal. We've worked very hard for the past almost two years now. Maryland ranks, just a couple of these bullets, Maryland ranks 11th in per-student spending, 19th when you adjust for regional cost differences. So, a lot of people say, oh, Maryland spends so much money on education. Well, we spend a fair amount of money, but we've got room to spend more, because we're certainly not the biggest spender in the country. We have enormous teacher shortages. I'm so glad to see all these teachers here tonight. God bless you all. I mean, where would we be? And I have a lot to say about teachers and what the commission thinks should happen with the profession. One of the issues is, no news to the teachers in the audience, but average teacher salaries in Maryland are 25% below those of professions with comparable education requirements. We've seen across the country, teachers' groups speaking out about their working conditions, their compensation. And this is a problem in Maryland, it's a national problem. We've got to come to grips with this problem, for sure. We are, another thing we've learned, which is very disturbing to members of the commission, we are widely perceived to be a regressive state in terms of funding, funding available to low-income students. If you look at the gap between what's spent on students living in high-income districts versus what's spent on kids living in low-income school districts, that gap is much larger in Maryland than in many other states. So, we are considered, in that sense, a regressive state. Everybody, you know, sort of thinks of Maryland as being progressive, but on this issue, we are regressive. And that's a great concern to the commission. And, you know, there are concentrations of low-income students all across the state. It's not confined to just several locations around the state. Look at that third bullet. More than half the public schools across the state have 40% or more of their students eligible for free or reduced lunch. So, this is an issue that cuts across the entire state and has to be addressed. There we go. Now, another disturbing fact we learned is that although there, sometimes people report that Maryland schools, Maryland has an outstanding school system, and in some measures, we do, but Maryland is very much in the middle of the pack in terms of student outcome. And in some sense, that's the most important measure. What are our kids learning? Now, I'm sure almost everyone in the audience knows what NAPE stands for, the National Assessment of Education Progress. It's mandated by the federal government. It's given to schools across the country, same exam. And here's some of our scores in recent years. That's, we can't feel good about that. We want to have a school system that is as good as any in the world, and we're kind of middle of the pack in the United States. So, that's a huge lift for us. So, what we also learned is that if you look at where the United States is in relation to other countries, it's not a pretty picture either. That, here's, there's something called the PISA exam, which is given to 15-year-olds in reading, math, and science. Same exam, samples of students across the country, and you look at where we rank, and as you go down from 2000 to 2015, our numbers get worse and worse and worse. So, our performance in relation to other students in other countries is declining. And that doesn't bode well. So, this is the information that the commission learned as we got into our work. And so, it just says, the harsh reality are that Maryland schools perform at a mediocre level in a country that performs at a mediocre level globally. And we're supposed to make recommendations so that we perform as well, this wasn't our idea, it's what the governor and the general assembly asked of us, we're supposed to make recommendations so we, our schools perform at the level of the best performing school systems in the world. So, a huge, a huge challenge. So, how do we, well, just one, I think I hardly need to spend any time on this. We all know how important education is, basically for two reasons. We can't have a successful state economy if we don't have well-educated workforce. But there's another point, issue, and this is the equity issue. In this day and age, how do you get out of poverty if you don't have a good education? So, that weighs very heavily on this commission, on the commission, that we've got to ensure that everybody has a chance for a high-quality education. Now, in order to do our work, we had the benefit of two consultants, one on the funding. Remember, we're supposed to review the Thornton Funding Formula and develop a funding formula to support our recommendations. And it's, this is the group that did this, they worked, as I say, with the Thornton Commission as well. But on this idea of having a school system that performs at the level of the best performing school systems in the world, where do you go to get information on that? Well, it turns out, we were blessed. There is a very impressive think tank in Washington, DC, called the National Center on Education and the Economy. They spent the last 20 years studying school systems around the world and trying to distill what are the elements of a high-performing school system? And, you know, they exist in different parts of the country, a world with different governmental structures, different social structures, different traditions, et cetera, et cetera. But out of their research, they identified what they call the nine building blocks that were common to all high-performing school systems. And so, what the commission did was to do a gap analysis. In other words, we want to perform as well as the best, here are the nine building blocks that make great systems, so let's measure what we're doing in Maryland with those nine building blocks and see, compare it to a select set of systems, Finland, Ontario, Shanghai, Singapore, that's the international, well, and then three states, Massachusetts, New Jersey, and New Hampshire. I'll come back to Massachusetts in just a little bit. Now, Maryland is the first state, no other state has done this yet, to do this gap analysis using these nine building blocks of high-performing systems. So, it turns out that using this gap analysis, the commission has developed five main recommendations. I'm gonna talk a little bit about each of them. So, here are the five recommendations of things we need to do in Maryland if we want to perform as well as these top-performing systems. So, number one is, we've got to invest in early childhood education. Good times, good times. So, the commission will be recommending that there be full-day preschool for all four-year-olds and all low-income three-year-olds, all low-income three-year-olds. And that we not stop at three-year-olds. We gotta go down and look at the very young children and young mothers. We've got to go down and look at the very young children and young mothers as they are bringing their children into this world. So, we're making recommendations that we need to significantly expand the Judy Centers and the Family Resource Center to provide better support for young mothers living in concentrations of poverty. Second recommendation is, we have to provide much more support for at-risk students, especially students that are living in concentrations of poverty. I mentioned to you before that Maryland's a regressive state on this score, and we've got to turn that around. So, that's a major change for us to make. Yes, oh, should I do this? I'm sorry. I get too excited. So, the third recommendation is, we have to try and transform teaching to make it a high-status profession. A high-status profession. I don't know how many of you happened to see the US News, USA Today paper article the other day. The lead story was about the teaching profession around the country, about how much is expected of teachers and how little support they get. Little support and respect. So, this third bucket is, we've got to transform teaching, make it a highly desirable, high-status profession. Fourth recommendation is, we have to be sure that our curriculum, if we're going to be educating young people at the level of the best performing schools, we've got to be sure our curriculum is benchmarked against international standards and leading to graduates who will be college-ready without having to take any remedial work and ready for, or have an industry-certified credential. And then, finally, we have to strengthen governance and accountability. I have given endless talks, endless talks around the state about the work of the commission. And, when they, people see the five policy areas, they say, yeah, they make a certain amount of sense. But, we've invested in money in education before. How do we know if we do it again, that we're going to get the results we want to have? So, having a system to ensure that the funds that are invested lead to the results we want is very important. So, this issue of governance and accountability, I'll come back to that for a moment as well. Now, we put all of this together, these five policy area of recommendations, we issued a preliminary report back in January, I'm very proud of that document. We had these 25 commissioners. We came together in a very strong consensus, supporting those five recommendations, and the issued this report, and it was very well-received. The legislature and the governor, the legislature passed a bill, jump-starting some of our recommendations. And, the governor signed the bill, and some initial funding was made available to support the five policy areas that we had identified. So, what are we doing now? Well, we're in the home stretch, and believe me, all 25 of us are darn glad of that. This has been a labor of love. You have no idea how much time and effort this has taken on the part of volunteers. So, we're finalizing our policy recommendations. We're doing a detailed cost analysis using new and existing funds. We're planning on making recommendations to call for change. So, that means some of the money that's being spent will be spent, will be available to spend on supporting new initiatives, but it's going to also take a new investment by the state. And, we will be issuing our report a little later in this year. Now, I want to come back to, I'm not going to go through all five of the policy recommendations, but because I know the board is particularly interested in the teacher, teaching profession, and I've got a lot of teachers here, I wanted to spend a little more time giving some specificity on what we're talking about. We have some incredibly dedicated, wonderful teachers who work in incredibly difficult conditions to get the results that they do, but we need to have a profession that people want to gravitate to, that we want to attract the best and brightest into teaching. And, so, one of the things that we're recommending are scholarships for people to get a degree and loan forgiveness on repayment. We are going to call upon our colleges of education to increase the rigor of our teacher preparation programs, greater emphasis on cultural competencies, much greater diversity in our teaching force in the state, to better reflect the diversity of our student population. We want teachers to feel comfortable doing innovations in their work, understanding what's going on around the world with new ideas, to be able to analyze research data, bring the best new ideas into their classrooms. We want to increase the certification standards based on a more rigorous teacher preparation program. And, we intend to provide seed grants for LEAs and teacher prep programs to enhance and expand the teaching profession. But, the bottom line is, we've got to treat teachers as professionals. And, so, one thing that we learned is that in the US, teachers spend much more time in front of the classroom and much less time working collaboratively on curriculum development, new teaching strategies, mentoring and tutoring. And, so, we have to professionalize the teaching professional and build a culture of collaboration and working together among the teaching force. We've got to compensate teachers better. And, so, what we're recommending is that we should, we should pay teachers at the level of other professionals that require the same amount of education. So, we're talking about CPAs, nurses, architects. And, we also intend to establish, we're recommending a career ladder for teachers and leaders, so with advancement based on demonstrated effectiveness. Now, one of the problems we have at the moment is, oftentimes, you're a very good teacher, you're doing well in the classroom, but you've got family responsibilities. You need more money. So, one avenue is to leave the classroom and go into administration. Nothing wrong with administration, is there, Madam Superintendent? But, but still, we want to make it possible for good teachers to stay in the classroom and get compensated appropriately. Another thing we've been looking at very carefully is the college and career-ready standards. We have a mismatch at the moment. We really don't know accurately what our colleges and universities expect when students leave high school. Therefore, we have lots of students going into remedial work. So, we need to do some real serious work at aligning the expectations of the colleges with the exit requirements of our institution. We want, what we want to do is sort of target that students will reach a college and career-ready standard by the end of the 10th grade. And, that will mean that we have two years in high school to do something really meaningful with these students. Now, we know some students won't reach that at the end, until the 12th grade, so not every student will be able to do that. But, and perhaps some will never will, but we're building into this system, early warning signals, tutoring, and other supports, so that students are on path to get to college and career-ready, and if they're not, we can bring the resources to bear so that they will be. Once you pass the college and career-ready standards, then we see a number of options for students. They can go into advanced placement, the international baccalaureate. They could do early college, get a college degree while they're still in high school. They could launch a career, get involved in a career and technical education program, I want to say just a bit more of that in a second, leading to industry credentials. And, we also want to make it possible, some students will want a sample from among all three of these pathways. But, we're really focused on building a very strong career and technical education program. It's so badly needed in our economy today. There are great jobs out there, you know, coding, IT, all sorts of jobs, where you don't actually have to go to college, at least right away, and make a really good salary. Auto mechanic, how many of you, I mean, when I go to get my car fixed now, they plug it into a computer. It's, plumbing has become a highly skilled technical profession. So, there are lots of good jobs, and we are putting a big emphasis on creating a robust career and technical education program, so that we're going to bring the high schools and the community colleges and the business community together to create the right standards, get everybody aligned. We want, we want to emphasize workplace learning, apprenticeships. The business community is quite excited about having apprenticeships come down to the high school level. And, so, CTE will be a significant focus for us. Now, I said something about accountability, and I just can't overemphasize this. I think this is going to be a huge lift to get the state to invest the money we need invested in order to pull all this off. So, we've got to have a credible accountability system that will convince the people out there that will be spending their tax dollars on this, that if they make the investment, they're going to get the return on the investment. So, this is, this will be a significant part of our report. So, let me mention, Dr. Eubanks, my final thoughts on this, and we can then have whatever discussion you would like. I'm actually now quite confident that we're going to write and produce a very good report. I have no doubt, the commission has come together, we're aligned, we agree on these five, you know, we have debates and arguments about some of the details, but we're going to deliver a good report. But, will the state have the resolve and the will and the persistence to implement these recommendations? Now, there's a shining, there's an example out there, I won't quite call it shiny, but there's a good example out there, Massachusetts. Back in the late 80s, 1980s, early 1990s, they embarked on something like we're doing right now, and in Massachusetts. And, they produced a report with some of the same elements as our report. And, they stuck with it for 10 years. Governors came and went, legislators came and went, they stuck with this report. And, so, let me tell you where Massachusetts is right now. They have some issues, they still have some equity gaps. But, in terms of student performance, if Massachusetts were a country, they would rank fifth on the PISA exam. Remember, I said the US overall ranks 26th, 27th, 28th? They would rank fifth. And, I say to everybody, by golly, if Massachusetts can do it, so can Maryland. So, this is just, I think, a really critical moment for our state. We can continue on what we're doing now, making incremental improvements, or we can be bold and implement changes that will build a bright future for our state and all of our children. So, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kerwin, for that tremendously powerful report, colleagues. As you know, we sit here and we spend a lot of our time trying to deal with the local challenges that we have. It's so important to recognize that our local challenges are put in a state context, in a national context, in an international context. The challenges that we have before us that have been put out by the great work of this commission, and the challenge that they have that we can make incremental change, which we've been doing for a long, educators know all about incremental change. Or, we can be bold and make dramatic change. What a tremendous challenge that is before us. Let's talk about it, colleagues. If you want to have questions or comments, please do buzz in. We'll start with Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Chancellor Kerwin, thank you so much for your service. I was one year after you left the USM, I chaired the Student Council.
Oh, my goodness.
One year after, I was with Bob Corrigan. So, from a Towson Tiger to a UMD Terp, thank you very much for your service.
Well, thank you so much.
Okay. And, I had the opportunity to testify before your commission around community schools and support for at-risk students and holistic supports. Can you just give a little insight on the commission's stance on community schools, sir?
Well, we are huge fans of community schools. I've visited three or four community schools, various locations in the state. And, you just, you walk into the community school and you can just feel the difference. So, one of our recommendations is that every, every school that is serving students with high concentration of poverty, has the opportunity, has the expectation, let me say, that they will become a community school. It's just vitally important. So, I am, the commission is just fully supportive of this concept of community schools.
That really warms my heart, sir, it really does. I'm sure it does for a lot of colleges and a lot of folks in the room as well, they were advocates for that policy. At the same time as the Kerwin Commission was going on and still goes on, Prince George's County Public Schools Administration and the Board embarked on a little task of our own around educational equity. We had a task force that I co-chaired with Chief of Staff, Mr. Rhodes. And, the recommendations of your commission really guided our work around funding for schools that have high-concentrated pockets of poverty. And, as we are starting to redraft our board policy on equity that hasn't been touched in almost a decade, I want to hear your thoughts on, you know, what would you define as at-risk students?
Well, you know, I think there are various ways of thinking about it. I think for certain students who are growing up in communities where there's a high concentration of poverty, which tend to be communities where there's a high crime rate, difficult health issues, et cetera, so, you know, that certainly would be at risk. Then, I think there are, there are young people that are born with some learning challenges and disadvantages, special education, et cetera. I think these are students at risk. I think our view is that our goal as a state has got to be to eliminate achievement gaps based on whatever category, income, race, ethnicity. We have to eliminate equity gaps in performance. We can't be the state we need to be if we don't do that. We can't be the country we need to be if we don't do that. So, I think that's how we look at the at-risk, very, some very specific categories, but also a broader vision that the focus really has got to be on eliminating achievement gaps.
Thank you, sir. And, my last question, I yield back, Mr. Chair, regarding the comparisons or the internationally or throughout the nation. I have the honor of serving on May, Maryland Association Board of Education, their Board of Directors.
Oh, yes.
And, you presented to us before.
I did.
And, I appreciate that. And, a lot of my colleagues on that board
Right.
Did have some concerns around the comparison to Finland with low poverty, and Finland's residents pay a lot more taxes. Singapore, most recent study that we talked about, 80% of the students, in addition to their regular school hours, attend weekend school or night school. Even Massachusetts had a very large charter school expansion. Just give me your thoughts on how we are being so bold in our comparison to other states and other nations where I think our society may have to, the philosophy on education may have to shift as well.
Yeah, it's true. Although, it's, not all of the seven school countries that we looked at, you know, Singapore, for example, has great racial and cultural diversity within you know, Singapore, for example, has great racial and cultural diversity within its population. Lots of immigrants in the country. Finland has had a significant infusion of new immigrants into that country. Massachusetts is a state that in many ways looks like Maryland in terms of size, wealth, et cetera. So I don't think we should feel that we have something that's so different in Maryland that we can't achieve at the level of these other high-performing systems. We just have to have the will to do it.[647.25][647.25][applause]
Thank you very much, sir. I yield back.
Thank you. Colleagues, I have a speaker listed now. We won't change the rules or anything. I ask with respect to Dr. Kerwin's time and our packed agenda to try, if you can, to get everything done in round one, and we'll see how that goes. We have Ahmed, Williams, Valentine, Grady, Wiseman, Boston, and Page. Ms. Ahmed.
Chancellor Kerwin, hello.
Hello.
Welcome. Thank you so much for coming here. I can't think of someone, anyone more earnest, sincere, and qualified to be leading this commission. And you've played such a key role in my personal and educational development, not only during my time as student regent, which was your last year as chancellor, but also before I was born, when you taught my mom calculus at the University of Maryland. And y'all, my mom does not like calculus, but she loved Chancellor Kerwin's teaching and the way that he presented, and you all were witness to the way that he executes information. So thank you for all of the work that you've done. My question, I have two questions. The first question is, you had one slide that talked about the way that we're mediocre. For a number of years in Maryland under the O'Malley administration, it was known that, the thing that were being said is that we're number one in Maryland. So how is it that we were touting that number one position, and now this is it?
Well, you know, as such a smart student, instantly, this young lady was on the Board of Regents, so she was my boss, in a very real sense. But you know, you can prove anything with statistics. So you can put together some metrics, and some organizations have, where Maryland stands out in relation to the other schools in the country. For example, in one of these reports, they used how many students as an important metric, how many students were taking advanced placement courses. Not how many earned advanced placement credits, how many were taking advanced placement courses. And there was a large, Maryland has a disproportionately high number, which is a good thing. I love students taking advanced placement. But for me, the bottom line is, what are the learning outcomes? What are students learning? Now, if we have a test that's given in every state, same test, same sampling process, in every state in the Union, and we end up in the middle of the pack, we can't be happy about that. And guess who's number one? Massachusetts. So again, you know, and there are good things. I sometimes worry that we go overboard in painting. There are many good things. We just heard a fabulous young man who's getting a great education right here in Prince George's County. He's going to be an architect and have a scholarship at the University of Maryland. So we do good things. We just need to make it good for everybody, and that's not what is happening.[848.01][848.01][applause]
Thank you, Chancellor Kerwin. And then my second question is, where are we looking in terms of the updated funding formula? What are some changes that you think will be made?
You know, I wish I could lay it all out for you. I know everybody would love to hear a number right now, but I don't dare do that because what we're doing, and this has been unbelievably difficult. We have a whole, just take CTE or the teacher career ladder. We don't have that now. So we are costing out what it will take to build a respectable career ladder so teachers are compensated at the level of professions that require the same standard of education. Or CTE, we're doing new things with CTE. We're costing that out right now. We just don't have, we have the pieces of the number, but within the next three or four weeks, numbers will begin to roll out of the commission. But I would be, it would be, I think, irresponsible of me to sort of speculate on numbers at this point.
Okay, thank you. We'll be looking forward to seeing that. Thank you, Chancellor Kerwin.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Dr. Kerwin, thank you so much for your report.
Thank you.
Being a civil engineer from the University of Maryland College Park, I can appreciate the way you presented, and that is the way we learned there at College Park. Your statement of being bold so that we can make dramatic change is so important for us to hear because we need to take bold steps to make the massive increases that we need to do in education. I like the holistic look at it. You're not only looking at just the funding, but you're also looking at the curriculum, how we treat our educators in everywhere in our school system. And I think that report moves us in the right direction to do better, not only in the state, but in particular Prince George's County Public Schools, where we do have a high concentration of students that need support. So in Prince George's County, we are moving our CTE program forward with the apprenticeships and things like that, and this just supports that we're moving in the right direction with our students. And so my first question was asked by Ms. Ahmed about the timeline and money.
On money, yes.
But my only question that I have is, what are your thoughts? You talked about how statistics can be used in any way to come up with a result. I always say data can be twisted to show whatever we want to see.
Right.
One of the ways that we collect data is through testing.
Right.
And in your report, can you give us a little detail on your recommendation on testing in schools?
Sure. Well, one of the things that we discovered about these high-performing systems is they don't test nearly as much as we do.[1034.28][1034.28][applause] Now, there are certain stages of the education process, maybe three or four times they do testing, but they don't do it, you know, with the volume that we do here in the United States. And so the commission is very concerned about this, but a lot of this testing is mandated by the federal government. And so we can't, as a state, just back away from that. But we are urging policymakers in the state, and hopefully, I think our report will get some national attention, to rethink the amount of testing we're doing with our young people, because that's just not the way the high-performing systems operate.
Thank you so much. And as far as, when you look at the testing, and you talked about the amount of hours that teachers are in front of students
Right.
Compared to giving them an opportunity to be collaborative and learn from other careers, other teachers, on how to present the current information. So when the students leave our schools, they are ready for the current work. What would be your recommendation on how we process that in the meantime while the Kerwin Report is being implemented?
Yeah. You know, I hope I'm answering your question. I think a lot of this will have to be phased in. It's massive. We're thinking a 10-year period. That's what happened in Massachusetts. So it will have to be phased in. But we obviously will need to have, if we're going to have teachers spend less time in front of students and spend more time working in collaboration and improving curriculum and learning new teaching strategies, we're going to have to have more teachers. I mean, there's no way around that. So we'll have to phase in, while we're doing all these other things, some increase in the overall teacher population. And we think these recommendations, if young people see that the state is serious, we think young people are going to want to become teachers. It's going to be an exciting and rewarding, both emotionally and financially rewarding profession. You know, on this whole thing with collaboration, my son's an architect, and he has a midsize firm, and so they get a project. Do they send one architect to work in a little cubicle all by himself or herself to work on that project and not talk to anybody else? No! They come together. They bounce ideas off of each other. It's the same thing in a law firm. If they have a case, people come together and discuss how they can do the best job with that case. That's the kind of culture we need to create. We have it to some extent maybe, but that's the kind of culture we need to create in our schools.
I agree. I agree. And we're actually, I've visited a lot of schools since the beginning of the year, and that is what we're doing in our classrooms. There are collaborations among students before they begin their assignment. So you're absolutely right, and I'm going to end with just a comment that this report, first of all, it puts in perspective where we stand, like Dr. Eubank said, not only in the country, but in the world. And we have to make these bold changes in order to make it happen. So I appreciate the work that you have done leading this commission, and I'm looking forward to seeing the final report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Valentine.
Thank you. And again, I appreciate your work on this as well. You could tell from the applause in the audience that many of us approve a lot of what you said. The recommendations are ones that we've heard from this space and from other spaces as well. At the same time, we've heard this story before with respect to a statewide commission, particularly the Thornton Commission, talking about trying to bring in educational equity at Prince George's County. And we've passed the bill, but we also had to fight for that money every year in Annapolis. And we call for parents and members of our labor union to go to Annapolis every year to ask for that money. And depending on who was in that governor's seat, sometimes we got the money and sometimes we didn't. And so I just want to say elections matter.[1333.11][1333.11][applause] At the same time, it's important that, you know, we also understand that once you make these recommendations and you put them in a policy, we have to hold our state legislators and whoever's in the governor's seat accountable every year after year. And so my first question is, how can we, as members of the school board and as the community members who are here behind you, be very good advocates to ensure that recommendations are not just words on a wall, but actually come to fruition?
Yeah. Well, you raise an excellent point. You know, you can write a report, and if there isn't a groundswell of support for its recommendations, it just, it won't happen. And so it is my fervent hope that communities, school boards, organizations will come together, rise up, and just make it clear that this has to happen. There are a number, there's several organizations that have sprung up around the state. One is called Strong Schools Maryland, which is creating teams of people in every jurisdiction in the state to become the focus of activity in that particular jurisdiction in support of the commission's report when it comes out. And they've raised a fairly substantial sum of money to help support this effort. They're not the only such organization. But, you know, it's, all of us who believe deeply in what we're trying to accomplish here, we've got to come together and just make a force that will not, cannot be resisted to make this happen.
And I would agree. I would also say that, like the Thornton Commission, a lot of these recommendations disproportionately impact Prince George's County. As you think about other jurisdictions and how organized they are around ensuring they get their piece, that we as a county fight for our peace, fight for our children, fight for our students, because other districts are organized.
Yeah.
And they've always been organized around this. And like my colleague, I sit at the state level on the Maryland Education Association Board of Education. I'm in those meetings. And hearing them talk about smaller districts in the state who are, you know, coming to the table in Annapolis looking for that money, and so it's really incumbent upon us as citizens of Prince George's County to advocate and fight for our peace.
Right.
I'll just conclude and say thank you for everything you've done, a lot of what you recommended, particularly around funding for young people wanting to go into the teacher profession, something we've advocated from this dais. Programs like Call Me Mister out of Clemson University, which really takes young men of color, particularly gives them a full ride to college, but requires them to teach for five years. Other programs that, you know, increase teacher pay through living in a classroom, all the things we advocate for. But thank you for justifying that with your research. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Ms. Grady.
I'll just say, thank you so much for your presentation. A lot of my questions have already been asked. The last question I had was around your vision around when you were talking about systemic accountability and governance. Can you speak a little bit more about that?
Yeah. This may be a tough sell in front of a local school board.[1554.58][1554.58][laughter] But it, we have this tradition in America of more or less absolute control of schools at the local level, and it's a good thing. I'm not, but if you look at the high-performing systems, they have a structure, a set of overarching policies that everybody is working on. So it's not, so to speak, every jurisdiction for itself, that there is this overarching. We've got to agree that there are cer, we're going to have a really high-quality CTE program. We're going to have a career ladder. Now, there's got to be some consistency around the state for what this career ladder is. You can't have one kind of career ladder that's totally different in one county, that's totally different from one in another state. We've got to have some consistency with how we're dealing with early childhood education. So I think we have to have some balance in, yes, local initiative, local authority, for sure, but I think we can only get to where we need to be in a state if all of that is, that has to be wrapped in some larger vision where people are working toward common goals with common overarching strategies. I don't know if that makes sense, but that's the way I see it.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Grady. Dr. Wiseman.
I want to say, it's really great to have you here, and I've really enjoyed listening to this because I attended many of the meetings during the first year.
Right.
And I saw you with piles of materials on either side of you as you waded through all the data that helped you guide you to these recommendations. So I really, I know how, and I heard some of those conversations with your committee. They weren't always easy, I know. So I really appreciate all the work. And I don't have a question because my colleagues have already asked the questions I wanted to ask.
Good. Thank you.
So I'll move it on.
Thank you, Dr. Wiseman. Ms. Boston.
Dr. Kerwin, first, I want to thank you and the commission for all of those hours of volunteering that you did to put this report together. It's a great presentation. I think a lot of the things that you put in this commission, in this report, is things that we know would help move us forward. One of the things that I was curious about, and when you said less time for classroom, for teachers to be in front of the classroom. So what is, can you give us a little idea of what your recommendation around that?
Yeah.
Would it be?
Okay. So if you look in Maryland, I think the average is something over 80% of the time that a teacher during the day is in front of a classroom. If you look at high-performing systems, it's more like 60%. Now, that does, that means they're also working the rest of that time. They're working together. They're maybe mentoring some students. They're maybe doing some tutoring. They may be trying to understand some new strategies for teaching and learning. So it's that kind of gap that we have in Maryland where So it's that kind of gap that we have in Maryland where too often teachers are just off on their own and they don't have the benefit of the collaborative spirit and partnerships that can be created, bouncing ideas off and working, working out problems and issues with their, with their colleagues. So that's, that's what we're talking about. But it's this, this 80, 80, 60 is the sort of range of difference that we see.
So, so is your recommendation more around having a, two people, the two teachers or a teacher and the teachers aid in our classrooms to free up our teachers for some more teacher development?
You know, I, I, I think how that's actually done is really a local issue. So I don't think the commission is going to try to, try to tell. But I think one way it will happen, if, if we have more teachers, then, then there will be ti, you don't, that will free up ti, time in, in the classroom for, for sure.
And my final question, so I know everyone knows that the, one of the initiatives in the, on the ballot this year is the, is the lock, lockbox formula for
Right.
the casino money. And has there been any conversation around that money being used to support some of the initiatives or the recommendations that you're coming forward?
Yeah.
Or is that something I need to wait for the legislature?
Well, no, no. I, I, I think there's a lot of talk about that. And quite frankly, I think that's the expectation, that that's how that money would, would, would be used. That's my impression.
Great. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Ms. Page.
Hello.
Hi.
As a prospective Ohio State student, I see that you are an amazing product of that. So I just wanted to start by thanking you for your work on the commission. I had a lot of notes and questions, but I'm going to keep it short to two. I know one of the things that myself, along with several other of my colleagues, have been discussing is the student counselor ratio. Oftentimes, we see our counselors focused so much on paperwork and not enough time on counseling our students. So I wanted to know what if any discussion you've been having around the student counselor ratio and what the current council recommendation would be for our ratio.
Yeah. I don't know that we have a, we, I don't know that we have a specific ratio. I do know that the current situation is just unacceptable. I mean, when a counselor, a college counselor is, I don't know what the num, maybe one to 500 students, maybe that would be considered a good ratio. But we, we don't have nearly enough infrastructure in our schools, support infrastructure in our schools of, of counseling. And so we, we, the expectation is that that will be built into our funding formula so that that will be possible.
Thank you. I wholeheartedly agree with increasing this student counselor ratio. My second question is dithering off of my colleague Wallace. In mentioning community schools, I think it's important to not only educate our students academically, but mentally and socially as well.
Absolutely.
So I wanted to know what if any conversation has been surrounded around restorative justice within our schools?
Oh, yes. I'm ver, I'm very, I'm very glad you mentioned restor, we had a phenomenal presentation on restorative justice at a recent commission meeting. And it has, it, it, there is language about the commission's expectation on the use of restorative practices in the report. So it will be in the report, referenced in a very positive way.
That's awesome. Thank you so much for the question.
Thank you. Mr. Barles.
Can you gear up the slide, number 13? I want to first thank you for your work. I know you've been at this for quite some time, so I appreciate everything that the commission has done. The last bullet here, the study of the cost of adequacy for special education.
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah. Well, the, one thing we've learned is, in our work, is that there, there is, there is no carefully done research on the amount of resources that are needed to adequately support special education anywhere in the country. So each state has built, we have a formula in, in the state of Maryland, sort of built, I guess, out of, sort of incrementally based on, on past, on past allocations. But what the commission, the commission is going to make a significant increase in, recommend a, a significant increase in investment in special education. But it's also, this is one area where we're asking the general assembly and the governor to appoint a very high level group to really study the issue of special education and what does it take to provide adequacy in this area? So we're going to increase the current funding available to special education, but we're hoping that the state can look at this, the real need there, in a very significant way and, and, and produce a more research-based formula for what we need to do in Maryland on special ed.
I appreciate that. And that's certainly an area that I know so many of the board members, community members, and parents care a whole lot about. How are we supporting our students
Right.
with IEPs and where in the special education program, reducing the caseload of special educators, the whole nine needs to be examined. So I appreciate that point being in there. I guess my, my last question, you know, this whole document and plan will take, you know, well over a billion dollars. Is there a recommendation as far as, you know, do this one thing more immediately versus the next thing?
Right. Excellent point. Excellent question. This will have to be phased in, as, as I said, and there are some things that we will do right away. I think the investment in early childhood education, that's, that's a, that's a clear, we know how to do it. It's clear what, what needs to be done. So that will be an early part of, of the, of the plan. We talk about the colleges of education upping their game and making teacher preparation more rigorous. That's going to take some time. So the, I, I think these various, the various initiatives in here will sort of sort themselves out. And we obviously will provide guidance on that. But some things will be, it'll be clear that this is something we can strike early and make a real difference. Other things are going to require some of the other initiatives to be done first. And so we will have a, a sort of, we will lay out a, a implementation timeline and schedule as part of the report.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. I will join my colleagues in just thanking you and, and really how grateful we are that you spent some time with us. I'll ask one final of my own questions
Sure.
and then we'll let you kind of get out of here
Okay.
and back. So we, we, we're going to advocate for this strongly. We're going to support it. We're going to believe and, and, and hold the state accountable for really coming through on this. But at the same time, on the local level, we have a budget. We have our, in fact, we're heading into budget season right now. And so regardless of whether the state does or doesn't come through, what advice would you give us on a local level as we head into our own budget season about how we look at some of these recommendations and examine them and think about our own challenges in relation to certainly special education, early childhood education?
Right.
And, and teacher professionalism have been so big for us over the last few years. What, what recommendations would you give to us moving forward?
Yeah. Well, that's, that's a daunting challenge you've given, given me. I, I, I don't really know, you know, the size of the budget and the flexibility you have with it. But I will, I, I think it was Dr. Williams that mentioned some of the initiatives that you've already launched here in Prince George's County that align with the commission's work. And so from my perspective, if you look at this report, these are things, the recommendations in our report are things that have proven to work in all sorts of different cultures, countries, school systems. So I, to, to the extent that you can align at least some of the money to supporting initiatives that are compatible, even in a modest way, compatible with the report's recommendations, as I think you have done to some extent, I think that would be a wise move.
Thank you very much, sir. Let's again give Dr. Curran
Okay, thank you.
a thank you and a round of applause. Thank you again. As, as, as Dr. Curran makes his way out, we will move on with our agenda, colleagues. As I mentioned earlier, I hope you'll give us a little flexibility. Our folks here in the audience, hopefully you've, you've found that time with Mr., with Dr. Curran to be worthwhile. But I, I know, I apologize for those of you who've been standing for a really long time. We usually don't need this many seats, but on, on these occasions, we're, we're really glad you came. But with your permission, colleagues, I would like to move straight into public comment and then we'll come back to the reports later, if that's okay. And as I move into public comments, I will do, as always, to talk about our rules and regulations. And I will also ask, this has been an incredibly popular day for, for public comment, and we've received numerous requests from people who, who want to come speak to us. And I, I may even ask one of our esteemed delegates to come and, and spend a few minutes. So I will also ask colleagues for a little bit of flexibility with the rules and regulations around public speaking tonight. I would beg your indulgence for that. And so with that, let's move on with public comment for this evening. Folks, you've been, you've been registered to speak in public comment forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments. The board cannot address your comments. All registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentation. At the sound of the buzzer, speakers, please finish your last sentence only. And please, speakers, address, address, don't address individuals directly and instead kind of address titles rather than names. And again, just if you adhere to these rules, we'll make the process go smoothly. Again, we got a couple of folks who are coming in a small group, so I'm going to be as flexible as I can about giving folks a little more time if you need it. And I think my colleagues will be flexible with that as well. So at that, let's get started with public comment on agenda items. I have agenda item 5.3 and Nichelle Mangila.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Again, my name is Nichelle Mangila, and I will be speaking in favor of the Fairwood site as the new school site for Woodmore Elementary School. I guess I'll give a little, just my perspective as a parent and a resident of Fairwood. Our family moved into the Fairwood community in 2013. And eager to be active in my community, I soon created, connected with other Fairwood residents who informed me of the possibility of a school within our community. The idea of an elementary school within walking distance from my home was exciting. It would mean the children and families of Fairwood and our neighboring communities could form bonds and friendships that would foster a true sense of community. However, I was not under the impression that it was a true, a sure thing, as I quickly learned of the impeding progress, the impeded progress of past and present community members to make the idea of a school within Fairwood a reality. With my oldest child approaching school age and the school within our community nowhere in sight, I was faced with the options of enrolling my children in our neighboring, in our neighborhood school, Glendale Elementary, or researching other local educational institutions ranging from private to public charter schools. Glendale, although a very well-performing county elementary school, has been overcrowded for many years. So I focused my attention on researching my other options. I somewhat stumbled on the vast specialty program options within PG CPS and soon entered my daughter into the lotteries for the Montessori and French immersion programs. She won a spot in 2017, in the 2017 kindergarten class at Dora Kennedy French Immersion and where she is currently. And her younger sister is also now enrolled at Dora Kennedy as part of this year's kindergarten class. I feel many parents in Fairwood, Woodmore, and other surrounding communities have found or find themselves in a similar situation. With limited adequate school options within our rapidly expanding communities, we are left to fend for ourselves. Many families have been fortunate to gain access to highly regarded public charter schools and/or earn a spot in one of the highly coveted specialty programs, and some have opted to enroll their children in private schools. As a resident, oh, as a Prince George's County resident, it is our right, not a privilege, to expect our county school system to ensure every community and every neighborhood has access to local publicly funded schools that adequately meet the needs of the residents in those communities. Woodmore and Glendale Elementary Schools no longer meet the needs of the communities they were built to service. It's time to build schools that will meet the needs of our communities. And building a modernized primary school in Fairwood on the Fairwood site is a step in the right direction. Please approve the recommendation to select Fairwood site as a new school site for Woodmore Elementary, Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, as, I'll beg your indulgence and as is our tradition, when esteemed members of the elected community come, we want to invite them to come and participate in esteemed delegate Eric Barron from District 25. Eric Barron. I know, I always, I, Mr. Barron, I pronounce everybody's name wrong. Everybody knows that. I pronounce everybody's name wrong, my friend. So thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, esteemed members of the school board. Again, for the record, my name is Delegate Eric Barron. You all have many important items on your agenda, so I'll be brief. One of those items is a proposed approval for a recommendation from your interim CEO for replacement of the existing building for the Woodmore Elementary School for future modernization at the site at Fairwood. This recommendation is pending future approval of funding from the county council for planning in the future for the capital improvement program. The recommendation comes after a careful consideration by the Woodmore Elementary School Feasibility Study Planning Committee, which was comprised of stakeholders from the surrounding communities that include Legislative District 24, which I represent, and Legislative District 23. I know the committee's consideration was careful, painstaking, and comprehensive because I participated in some of those meetings and I was kept up to date by many of its members. I want to commend one of your board members, Ms. Ahmed, for attending most, if not all of those meetings. Thank you for your commitment to the community. Thank you. So this feasibility study is required, of course, prior to state funding. And I want to assure you that the recommendation before you enjoys enormous support from the state legislature, starting with the county's state representatives and many members in the surrounding community. There are members who were, because of the popularity of tonight, were unable to sign up. I'm going to ask if there are still here members who, people who came to this meeting in support of the new school at the Fairwood site. If you could stand up and clap. I stand with these individuals and many others who could not be here today, and I want to thank you for your careful consideration. I also, before I leave, want to just say a few words regarding the Curran Commission. I ask that you please stay engaged with me and the delegation as we consider implementation and funding for the commission's recommendations. You all and the many teachers here and many others watching, you're at the front, front lines, and I want to invite you to be skeptical. And it sounds like there's a lot of skepticism already about whether we in Annapolis have the resolve to do this. Just assume that we don't, okay? Start there. Assume that we will not be bold, that we don't have the resolve, and that we will not have the resolve, and that we will not have the persistence. And make sure that you demand that we implement these recommendations. Don't assume that we will. Demand we do.
Thank you so much, Delegate. Thank you, as always, for your staunch support of public education here in Prince George's County and across the state of Maryland. We'll now move on to public comment on non-agenda items. First speaker is Sally Smith. From PGCEA.
Good evening. My name is Sally Smith, and I am a science instructor from the Howard Beal and Science Center. I have served this county for 25 years. I love what I do. I thank you for what you do. But there are important issues to be addressed. I have received my statement of benefits from the State of Maryland. The Maryland State Retirement and Pension System is pleased to present you with your annual personal statement of benefits for the fiscal year 2018. Every effort has been made to ensure the accuracy of this statement. We have included the summary of information of earned contributions received through June 2018 based on payroll information submitted by your employer. I am here tonight because the teachers, old like myself, we are four steps behind. It is not reflected in our retirement. We want to be financially secure. This is our livelihood. These are our families. So many promises have been made. We have met with Mr. Eubanks. We have met with Ms. Boston on behalf of the board. Promises were made for a study. We're told HR doesn't know. How is this possible? We are competent. This is a mathematical calculation. You know when we were hired? You know what the rate was? I petition this board on behalf of all of us old teachers that have served you and enjoy it. I ask you, one person on this board, somebody, make a motion to get the accurate information, to get a timeline. We teach our students, do what's right, do what's just, be moral people. It is an injustice to ignore us. It's been 15 years. We have been trying to resolve this issue. And while I'm here, I've got one more. Our badges don't work. I have tried to get in my building. I have tried to use the copier. I am told that I have to pay a $10 lost badge fee to have my badge replaced. This is faulty equipment. How much? How much more must we take? When you bring this up, you're told, well, you have other options. Oh, my gosh. Fuel to the fire. How insulting. How degrading. How unacceptable. Who on this board will step up, make motions, and get these things fixed, and do the ethical thing? Do what is right? Who will step up? Who will resolve these issues for these teachers? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Our next speaker is Michelle Clark, PGCEA Board of Directors.
I don't know if I can top that, but I'll try. Good evening. As you know, my name is Michelle Clark, and I'm currently a teacher at Kenmore Early Childhood Center. Proud to be there, too. I am also a proud member of Prince George's County Educators Association and a member-at-large of the Board of Directors. I'm pleased to join with my colleagues here to help present our Bargaining for the Common Good platform. As educators, we look forward to working with you to help create the schools that every child in Prince George's County deserves. Not what they get, what they deserve. We are proud to be part of a movement for change in education that is sweeping the country. We've seen the power that educators have when we stand together on behalf of our students and our schools. We look to our brethren in West Virginia, Oklahoma, Colorado, North Carolina, Arizona, et cetera, for a great way to lead us forward. A key plank of our platform is fair compensation for educators, as just mentioned by Dr. Kerwin. A school system succeeds when its educators are treated and compensated like the dedicated professionals they are. A badge to get into our buildings would help, too. And by increasing our base salary, restoring lost steps, keeping healthcare costs reasonable, and offering tuition reimbursement to further professional development, Prince George's County schools can continue to attack and retain, retain, that's a big problem here, world-class teachers to our community. We also support a more sensible workload for educators. Educators want to spend more time planning our lessons and teaching our students. A more thoughtful and streamlined documentation process should be implemented to reduce burdensome and unnecessary paperwork. And to prepare Prince George's County students for college and career, teachers need adequate preparation time and instructional support in order to do so. I'm now working in an early childhood education center with three-year-olds, and even though I have more time than I used to to plan, it's still not nearly enough when you look at what we need for our students. And that's true across the board. I can't imagine there's a person in this audience who will tell you they have all the time they need. And by the way, collaborative planning isn't really collaborative, and it isn't really led by your teachers. It's led by your administrators. So if you want to count that as our planning time, it doesn't count by contract. Please get that taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Our next speaker is Teresa Dudley, President of Prince George's County Educators Association.
Good evening, everyone, and I want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak, Mr. Chairman. We are here today because the Prince George's County Educators Association, on behalf of our members, is announcing a new effort, Bargaining for the Common Good. As you may know, our contract negotiations will get underway soon. Bargaining for the Common Good is a model in which the entire community, not just educators, but students, parents, and others unite to advocate on behalf of quality schools. At the meeting that we had back in June, when we were talking about the alliance to reclaim our schools, and we had people here in the well talking about working together, well, we're taking it to another level. We're ratcheting it up, because I want everybody in here to know tonight that you're involved. There will be no negotiations behind closed doors and hiding what we're doing. It is time for us to bring negotiations out into the public and allow the parents to talk about the issues that are important to them. Parents, we want to hear about overcrowded classrooms. The conditions that your children are learning in are the same conditions that our educators are working in. Bargaining for the Common Good seeks to create the schools Prince George's County deserves. Tonight, you will hear from students, educators, and parents who are joining with us in this initiative. We were outside today before the meeting. We had a little press conference, because it's really important that we create this alliance to reclaim our schools, because it can't be a 10-minute fix. This mess did not happen in 10 minutes. It took years and years and years of different things. And we have a pledge that we're going to give to each one of you tonight, because we want you, as members of the board, to join us in this alliance to reclaim our schools. We want to end the overcrowding in our school system. We want to hold the County Council accountable for the developers who are continuing to rape and pillage our school system by creating a situation where there's no room in the schools for the children. We want to make sure that you're with us on the Kerwin Commission. We want to make sure that this alliance, and this isn't just Prince George's County, this is a national alliance that we're a part of, with national funding, because we're coming, because we want to make sure that the plan that Mr. Kerwin talked about, that we come up with one that supersedes each one of you on this day is today. Because it doesn't matter who's here, we've got to do what's right for the children today, tomorrow, and the day after. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dudley. Our next speaker is Yvonne Basich. You know, I ask for forgiveness every meeting for the way I pronounce names. I apologize for that.
I respond to all misspeak of my name. My name is Yvonne Basich, and I'm a PE teacher at Kingston Elementary School. I'm also the vice president of the great Prince George's County Educators Association. And I am here to talk to you about bargaining for the common good, which other people have already explained to you. By the way, one year ago exactly, I sent in my $10 to replace my badge, because I had lost my badge. Later, as is my want, I found my badge, of course, my old badge. However, I have never gotten the badge that I paid for, $10. So I want my $10 back, or with inflation, you can buy me one football. So that's good. This evening, I would like to talk about two key parts of our bargaining platform, the role of testing in schools and creating healthy environments for students and staff. Now, we believe in accountability and measuring the progress of our students. We know that testing can serve an important role, but only when the instruments used provide useful and actionable data. All by themselves, they are useless. This is why we go to a doctor, and the doctor takes our blood pressure. And by that blood pressure, he knows certain things about our bodies as to whether we have to do something or just leave it alone, because everything is fine. So that's what a test is. Testing should not take up an inordinate amount of already limited instructional time. Now, Finland was mentioned. Finland does very well. They don't test like we do. They only test like twice during the year. It's a checking point. It's like taking the blood pressure. Our kids are tested to death. Our kids hate tests. When I put a paper in front of them and I say, it's just a quiz. It's just five questions, they groan and they moan, because they want us to have PE, not a test. A healthy learning environment, including safety and security, is of vital importance. Now, educators and our students thrive in safe and positive school environments, from mental health supports for students and adults to timely maintenance and repair of facilities. By the way, the water fountain in my gym has been broken for three years. It leaks. I put a bucket under it. When the bucket fills up, I pick up the bucket, excuse me, I schlep it to the outside, and I have to pour the water out and back it goes, because I can't send my students out into the hallway to get a drink of water. And during PE, they do need water. This is simple stuff, really. Too often, by the way, intimidation by staff and administrators weakens morale and drives educators to leave the school system. The majority of our teachers go out on sick leave because of stress-related illnesses. You can look that up. The stress is not from the kids. We love the kids. I love my kids. I would take every single one of them home with me. But sometimes, I need to have a day off, because I am so stressed-
Thank you.
-because my administrators, they make faces that I don't like when they come to visit the gym. Let me put it that way.
Thank you, Yvonne. Thank you, Ms. Basich.
Now, accountability and aggressive and intimidating behavior by supervisors must be improved, please. And by the way, planning, and I go to a planning meeting once a week.
Your time was up.
We don't get to plan. I just want to tell you. It comes from the top. They tell us what to do. We don't get to plan. We get to talk about their plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Justin Robinson, PGCEA member.
Good morning, board members, administration, colleagues, and community. Hello, my name is Justin Robinson, and I'm a seventh and eighth grade math teacher at Samuel P. Massey Academy. Bargaining for the Common Good is a model that expands the scope of bargaining beyond wages and benefits to issues that are important to the broader community. We are joining with students, parents, and other members of the community to work toward a school system that all of us can celebrate. Tonight, I'd like to talk about a couple of issues that are of great importance to educators. First, we support adequate funding to help create smaller class sizes for our students. Research has proven time and again that children learn better in classes that are not overcrowded. Creating smaller class sizes across Prince George's County public school system is a priority for educators and, of course, for families. We believe that parents should feel empowered to advocate for the changes to class sizes that negatively impact teaching and learning, and that school officials should be receptive to that advocacy. We also support a thoughtful and productive evaluation process. The evaluation of educators should serve as a tool to support and improve our performance and professional learning, and not as an excuse for punishment. The evaluation process should be developed and directed by fellow educators, and should be less burdensome and time-consuming than the current system. So, of course, the danger of a teacher saying we need smaller classes and a different evaluation system is that it comes across as wanting less work. So let me just share a little bit about myself. I graduated from Eleanor Roosevelt High School and the top 1% of my class. I matriculated to Harvard University, where I majored in economics. I returned home, and for the last seven and a quarter years, I've been a math teacher at Samuel P. Massey Academy in Forestville. In that time, I've completed a master's at the University of Maryland, an admin program at Johns Hopkins, and I achieved National Board certification. I'm going to keep talking, because I don't want to lose my time, but thank y'all. For the last two years, my students' park growth percentages were the highest in my building. Last year, my math eight students in a Title I non-specialty program school ranked fourth in the county on park. 100% of my Algebra I students passed their park exam. So clearly, I like to work. That's not the issue. I share all of this with you, not to boast, but to give context. At this point in my career, I have options. I know that I can make more money and feel more supported elsewhere, and yet I'm still here. This isn't about me or the teachers that are still here being lazy. This is about the empty job fairs this summer, the worst in the three years I've attended them. This is about how every other person in my resident teacher cohort has left for Howard, Montgomery, and Arlington. This is about how all three of my mentor teachers now work in DCPS, and have each individually solicited me to come join them. We need a better contract, one, to entice people to come here, and two, to stay. Our students deserve the benefit of a stable school with institutional memory, and not just new teachers trying to stay afloat. Competitive salaries, smaller class sizes, and fair evaluation would support that. So this isn't about me. This is about the new teachers that won't give PGCPS a chance, and all the years of collective wisdom roaming the halls of other school districts. Thank you for your attention, and we look forward to working with you in the months to come.
Thank you so much, Mr. Robinson. Our next speaker is Claudette Park, PGCEA member.
Good evening, Dr. Golson, Dr. Eubanks, and members of the board and other members. I'm here to kind of give a sample of a typical school in Prince George's County Public Schools. On Monday, our schools, FAC, met with our principal for our monthly meeting, and thank you, Dr. Golson, and the others who insisted that that happens in every school, because it's a good thing. At this meeting, we posed certain concerns and came up with possible solutions, in the hope that some common solutions would be made. Our concerns included, and this is the part that I think is typical for most of the schools in Prince George's for most of the schools in Prince George's County. Every year, teachers and students have to learn in excessively hot or cold classrooms. Recently, we went almost one week in excessively hot rooms, because the air conditioning went down. And of course, the air was fine in the main office. And after many complaints to our area director, as well as the ombudsman that still works thankfully, it was finally fixed. Then, of course, the rooms were, are excessively hot. The principals shared that the one maintenance staff, who goes around to the various schools to turn on the heat, will make his way back to our building at some point to readjust everything. So, in the meantime, we're all very hot. This, of course, is not acceptable. Our class sizes, in the 6th grade classrooms, our little babies are sitting in rooms of 40 and above. Our technology design classes have more students than computers. Our keyboard classes, piano keyboard classes, have more students than keyboards. And our call talk classes are 30 students, with roughly 50% of them having an IEP or low performing. I personally have one of these classes. Love my students to death, but you're creating a situation where I'm gonna have to end up getting gray hairs just to get them to move along, okay? Now, also included are issues around teachers sharing classrooms. That's also unacceptable. Water fountains that have not worked for years, including the two in the gym. Lack of support for the many new teachers in our building with basics like school max and SLOs and too many meetings. It is my hope that the upcoming bargaining process will not only bring staff salaries in line with other neighboring counties that we constantly lose teachers to, but put teachers and staff members as a top priority. Please, fix our buildings, cap our class sizes, make the evaluation process less cumbersome and subjective, and give us fair compensation. Please, give us the money that's owed to us from the back years. I have a teacher who was, came in as an M-Smart teacher. She got nationally board certified, admin one, and then she left for higher pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Clark. You know, making sure that we give everyone an opportunity to speak is critically important, and we know there are so many people, and we tend to make exceptions, and sometimes it has a snowball effect, but we do it anyway, because we want people to speak. So, I got an email from Ms. Kravitz, and one of my board members just noted to me that Eleanor Kravitz is in the audience today. Is that correct? A 1st grader Eleanor Kravitz? Well, we're gonna allow, with the permission of my colleagues, I should say, 1st grader Eleanor Kravitz to come and speak to us. And this should be a step...
Actually, we can get the cordless mic if that's...
We got a cordless mic?
Yeah, we'll get the cordless mic.
Okay.
Oh, I wanted to have the podium. Where's I stand?
Hi.
Hi.
So, I started my own petition a few months ago. And my whole school signed it, my whole school.
Tell us about it.
So, my petition was to get a new auditorium, because my school doesn't have a real stage.
What school do you go to?
I go to Benjamin D. Floy.
And how did you get all of these students to sign this petition for you?
Because a lot of people agreed, because last year, one of our art teachers fell off the stage.
That's terrible. We're gonna make sure that your parents give us a copy of that petition, and each one of these board members is gonna read it, okay? Anything else you want to add? No. Thank you very much. Thank you, board colleagues. One of the best rules exceptions I've ever made. We'll move on. Our next speaker is Dr. Anita Naves, I believe it is, from Myla's Cause, Pimple Parents for Education. Is, I see, there's so much movement, I can never tell if they're coming. Is there Ms. Naves here? No, all right. We'll move on. We have a tremendous group of professionals and colleagues here to speak to us this evening. I think you may notice it, in addition to the important colleagues that we have in PGCEA, some group of other individuals who want to come and speak to us. And we will start with Helene Johnson of the Prince George's National Panhellenic Council.
Good evening. I am Helene Johnson, president of 18 phenomenal chapters that comprise the Prince George's National Panhellenic Council, and am also a proud member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. The National Panhellenic Council is now 88 years young, as of May 10, 2018, whereas the Prince George's Council is 44 years young. Over the past 44 years, we continue to promote a strong tradition of service, especially to the youth of this county. On 13 November at 7:00 PM at Suitland Senior High School, we will host our third annual Scholarship Fair, where all high school students attending both public and private school are welcome. It is both an honor and a privilege to be a trusted entity that our community partners want to form a deeper relationship. However, we need assistance from our community partners, especially the school board, to continue implementing the wonderful programs we bring to the county. A memorandum of understanding between the National Panhellenic Council of Prince George's County and the school board is needed, for our chapters are drowning in building, usage fees, additional purchases of insurance, and background checks. Most of our nine organizations already require us to attain background checks if we are working with county youth. It is very costly to obtain two similar background checks. School board members let us work together to establish an MOU that will minimize the costs mentioned above, so that more money can be spent on student scholarships toward college. We, the members of the National Panhellenic Council, pledge steadfast love and devotion to our communities, our organizations, and to our sororities and fraternities. However, we need financial relief, as previously stated, to continue the many free programs we implement for the county youth. Thank you.
Were you gonna introduce colleagues from, tell me your Delta colleagues. They have to be with you on your time.
Um, okay. Well, this is Millicent Hawkins from the Fort Washington Alumni Chapter. And she is the president, yes. And the president of the Prince George's County Alumni Chapter, Greta Wiggins Lewis. Okay, but my understanding is they have a minute each.
I'll give you a few seconds to come in, and I can't give you much more than that.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Millicent Hawkins, as she said, is president of the Fort Washington Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. The Fort Washington Alumni Chapter was chartered in April 1990, and since that time, we have made a commitment to Prince George's County schools through our Delta, our Dr. Benny Shabazz Delta Academy for middle schools, and our Delta Gyms Program, which is also a national program for our high school students. We are most proud that in 2019, for our No More Hurt Summit, it will be our 10th anniversary of putting that summit on for young people and their parents. In addition, our most proud fact is that in the last 30 years, we have awarded more than $300,000 in scholarship to the students who display academic excellence, social awareness, leadership, and community involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. And just another quick...
Okay. My name is Greta Wiggins Lewis, president of Prince George's County Alumni Chapter, which was chartered in 1974. One of the things, as a continuation of college scholarships, this comprehensive program focuses on test-taking, college financial planning, and various other things. We have, since the inception of this program, dispensed over $1,153,000 in scholarship, with the anticipation of awarding another $80,000 in March of 2019. We have an Empowering Males to Build Opportunities for Development Independence and Embodied Program for males 14 to 18 for developmental purposes and motivational activities. So, these are kinds of things that we offer, and I'll leave a copy for the rest of the information.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We appreciate that. So, I understand some of our members from fraternity sorority organizations might come down as a group. Please do come down. If you're not alone, come down as the entire group that you're coming with. So, we, next up is Deidra Jackson from Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Iota Gamma Omega Chapter.
Good evening, board. I am joined by Nicola Kennedy, who is the president of a sister chapter here in Prince George's County. My name is Deidra Jackson. I am president of Iota Gamma Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Also, I serve as president of our 501(c)(3), the Ivy Community Charities of Prince George's County. We offer a great deal of support to the Prince George's County Public Schools by way of, this May, awarding $50,000 in scholarships to Prince George's County students, purchasing shoes, two pair of shoes for students twice a year by adopting families. This past weekend, we donated two tons of food to four food banks and two schools. We've implemented a new program at Forest Heights Elementary School, where we are now establishing a PTA association, whereas they did not have one. We have overcome the language barriers. We have tutoring and mentoring programs, Parents on Track, SWILA, and GADAY, which mentor our students, and a popcorn club, which mentors students from age four to college. We now have a college application process, where we prepare students for college and to be ready. We have adopted Bowie State University, where we also save as the mentors of our sisters on that campus. And I'll let Nicola share what our other uniforms are.
Yes, we're gonna share our time. Thank you. And on my chapter, Psi Phi Omega Chapter, we service the northern Prince George's County cities of Laurel, Bowie, and Greenbelt. And we also do great things in the county to support our students. We have donated over $50,000 in scholarship money since 2007. We do cold weather items for students. We as well do spring break backpacks, because you know, at that time, students are going home, and they're not having food during the week. So, we provide backpacks full of food for students in the Greenbelt area, as well as mentoring programs, as well as winter clothing, as well as school supplies, as well as supporting teachers. We donate school supplies and teacher supplies to our schools in Greenbelt, Laurel, and Bowie. We are thankful to service to all mankind. We're thankful for the time, but we also support, Helene, as her statement said, we are paying every month to have our chapter meetings at Eleanor Roosevelt High School, but we are also providing so many services to the students of Prince George's County. So, we ask you to consider it when you're looking at your administrative code. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the tremendous service and for your comments this evening. Our next speaker is Philip Debo, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated, Fort Washington Chapter.
Good evening. I am going to share my time with Walt Swindell. He is the pole mark of the Bowie Mitchellville Alumni Chapter, Kappa Alpha Psi. Good evening. My name is Walter Swindell. I'm the president of the Bowie Mitchellville Alumni Chapter, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity. We were founded in 2003, and we're celebrating our 15th year. We are committed to making a noticeable difference in the communities we serve. We have adopted Largo Senior High School as our high school of choice that we built in partnership with both the principal and the president of the PTA. We've participated in the DAT program for the last two years, welcoming the kids to school. We also held what we call one of our signature Learn to Live programs that we have, which teaches the students the importance of interacting appropriately with the police. We met with the entire 12th grade class last year, and we plan on doing it again this year. Just received an email over the past week from the president of the PTA outlining the programs for this current year, and we're looking forward to establishing a meaningful and continuous relationship with Largo Senior High School and making a noticeable difference in the community we serve.
Fort Washington Chapter was chartered in 2007 with the same commitment as all the Kappa chapters around the country. First, I want to say, we stand in solidarity with these teachers, with this community, with the other Panhellenic groups that are here. When they ask for money, when they ask for support, we stand 100% behind that. We do Guide Right. Guide Right is our national service program. We currently service 32 young men, ages 11 to 16, from 10 schools across Prince George's County. It costs money to do that, but we do it because it's a labor of love, and that's what we're supposed to do. We have to pull up and give back, show up and show out. Let's continue to do that, and we need that with the partnership from you all, all right? And with that, I'm gonna let somebody reclaim the rest of this time.
Thank you so much for that. Our next speaker is Anthony Lee from Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, Gamma Pi Chapter.
Good evening, distinguished members of the board. On behalf of the Brothers of Gamma Pi Chapter here in Prince George's County, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share with you the tremendous work that we have been doing for the last 45 years. I'm gonna ask the Brothers of Gamma Pi Chapter who are present to please stand. We have provided hundreds of thousands of dollars in scholarships to the students in Prince George's County. We have two award-winning programs that we have been offering for the last 45 years. Those programs include educational support, tutoring, mentoring. And one of the first programs that I'd like to discuss with you is our Q Kids program, which is an innovative program of Gamma Pi that focuses on wholesome educational and fun activities for our youth from at-risk and TNI communities. The program provides educational experiences to young African-American males between ages of seven and 13. And it's designed to help our children chase their goals, and the word "chase" there is used as an acronym. Number one, culture. Through culture, we provide them with field trips, museum visits, and the like. The H is for health. We provide them with healthy food, physical fitness activities and social activities that will increase their understanding. The A is for academics, grade monitoring, tutoring, as well as providing them with opportunities to be exposed to college campuses and universities. Service, we teach them through community service and community awareness. And then the E is for etiquette, social skills, physical hygiene, dress code, and the like. The second program I'd like to inform you of is our Project Enrich program, which meets monthly. And we provide the students in high school in Prince George's County with the opportunity to be trained in public speaking skills, writing, in addition to exposing them to career opportunities on both the national and international levels. Project Enrich meets at Bowie State University, and we provide them with a wonderful opportunity to be exposed to the college life early on from their freshman year. We track them from freshmen all the way to their senior year. The conclusion of this program, we provide them with scholarship resources. In addition to that, we provide our parents with tremendous insight as to how to fill FAFSA, how to apply for scholarships, and the like. We also provide them with non-traditional alternative college paths and vocational skills designed to strengthen them. So, as has been stated by previous members of the PanHale Council, we ask that you would strongly consider waiving some of the fees that you all charge us to utilize your facilities, because they can be used tremendously to continue to... because they can be used tremendously to continue to uplift the young students in Prince George's County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Our next speaker is Jasmine White, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Sigma Psi Zeta Chapter.
Good evening, my name is Jasmine White, President of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Sigma Psi Zeta Chapter.
My name is Erin Cribs, President of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, Delta Zeta Zeta Chapter.
My name is Lisa Simpson Smith, President of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Tau Delta Zeta Chapter. Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated was founded on January 16, 1920, on the campus of Howland University in Washington, DC. Our principles are scholarship, service, sisterhood, and finer womanhood. These are the core values upon which we all serve, families and communities of Prince George's County. For over 75 years, our chapters have collectively given over $1 million in scholarships to Prince George's County students. Through Zeta's National Thrust, Z-Hope, which stands for Zeta Helping Other People Excel, all three of our Prince George's Chapters have adopted schools and connected with students and families by providing tutoring, participating in back-to-school nights, donating school supplies, backpacks, and uniforms for thousands of students. For our adopted schools, we also provide academic, financial, and programmatic support to contribute to the development of student leaders and well-rounded student success and engagement. Zeta's national partnership with Marcha Dimes allows us to provide teen pregnancy programs and raise money for prematurity awareness. Our programs also address national issues such as domestic violence, voter registration, and suppression in elder care. Here are some of the schools that have been serviced by the chapters of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Prince George's County. Carmody Hills Elementary School, Cora L. Rice Elementary, Dodge Park Elementary, Laurel Elementary, P.E. Williams Elementary, Lewisdale Elementary, Mount Rainier Elementary, Steve Decatur Middle School, Highland Park Elementary School, Northwestern High School, Charles H. Flowers High School, and the Boys and Girls Club of Laurel. Leading up to our Centennial in 2020, we intend on increasing our impact in Prince George's County schools by expanding the presence of our youth groups for girls ages five through 17. We look forward to continued service with the students and families in the Prince George's community. In closing, we would like to leave you with the words of our dearly departed sorority, Teresa D. Banks. Everyone has divinity and worth. Education is life, not preparation for life. Stand on your tiptoes and reach your goals. The ladies of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Delta Zeta Zeta Chapter, Sigma Psi Zeta Chapter, and Tau Delta Zeta Chapter would like to thank the Prince George's County Board of Education for providing this platform for us to discuss our work and impact on students in the county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dawn Sherman, Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority Incorporated, Zeta Tau Sigma Chapter.
Good evening. On behalf of the Zeta Tau Sigma Chapter of Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority Incorporated, thank you for giving us this opportunity to share our great works that we have done over the past 35 years in service to the communities within Prince George's County. Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority Incorporated was founded on November 12, 1922, at Butler University in Indianapolis, Indiana. Founded by seven schoolteachers, our organization is committed to greater service and greater progress through promoting education, civic engagement, financial empowerment, and the uplift of the communities in which we live and serve. My name is Dr. Dawn Sherman. I am the President of Zeta Tau Sigma Chapter, and I am fortunate to have Ms. Sharon Royster, our Vice President, in attendance as well today. I might like to give you an overview of some of our national programs that we implement within Prince George's County and in conjunction with Prince George's County Schools. Operation Big Book Bag is our twice-yearly event where we collect and donate school supplies, teacher equipment, and teacher appreciation opportunities to schools within Prince George's County. This past fall, we partnered with Potomac Landing Elementary School to provide over $2,000 worth of school supplies to the students and families of Potomac Landing. This spring, we will provide a teacher appreciation event to another school within Prince George's County to show our appreciation for the hard work and dedication of the teachers, administrators, and other school personnel that serve our students every day. Additionally, our Souls for Little Souls program accepts donations of schools, uniforms, and shoes so that our students are able to go to school prepared and dressed and able to fully participate in their activities without worrying about whether they are able to fit the dress code. We also host our annual youth symposium event at a PG County, Prince George's County High School every year, which provides workshops, scholarship information opportunities, financial planning workshops, and other opportunities for our high school students to learn more about what life will be like after graduation and how to become a more active member of our society, and in particular, within the Prince George's County community. Most notably, our chapter has our ZTS Scholarship Fund, through which we have raised over $50,000 in scholarship money for graduating high school seniors and undergraduate students living in Prince George's County. Again, thank you for the opportunity to share our great works, and as our fellow members of the National PanHellenic Council have stated, we would appreciate the changing in the rules so that we are able to do more work within Prince George's County without the added burden of paying for additional space or resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our final speaker this evening is Omar Bulware, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, Pi Epsilon Omega Chap.
A couple of corrections.
Lambda, okay, I'm just reading what's on the list, brother. Please correct me.
Corrections, I'm Dr. Alex Bailey, the President, the founding President of the chapter, Pi Epsilon Lambda, here in Prince George's County. Former member of the other chapter in Prince George's County, Kappa Epsilon Lambda, and I am the, one of the charter members of the chapter, but I am the founder of the 501(c)(3) or the charitable foundation. And that's the part that we have used to be able to service this county by, I happen to be a grant writer, happen to be an educator, happen to be a counselor, and I happen to be an attorney. So, what we do is we go out, raise money, because we just don't have it. We don't have it. So we have to raise money, fundraise, and no one on our foundation is paid. Everything is free, and the funds that we've given out over the last 24 years to over 200 students is approximately $230,000. In addition, we have general scholarships for high school seniors. We have a program for middle school children called the Youth Leadership Development Institute. We have a program that we are the county's leading fundraiser for marching for babies. We have a program for high school seniors called the Boltilian, where we take young males, African-American males, and we try to teach them what it's like to be a true man. We work with at-risk students at Sheltonham Youth Center. We deal with the men's shelter here in Prince George's County. We also deal with the women's shelter here in Prince George's County. We try to teach the men at the men's shelter how to dress for success. We provide ties, we provide suits, and we talk about how you interview, okay? We try to touch every segment of the society. For the adults, we have caregiver symposium. For the elderly, we actually do the food baskets. We go up to Villa Rosa, and we do caroling and work with the seniors there. Finally, let's see. Because we are a national organization, we do voter registration, but we also do education and empowerment. We don't tell people who to vote for, but we certainly try to make sure that they understand the power of their vote, okay? Voteless people is the hopeless people. And we, as I said, we are doing education at all levels. We do general scholarships. Our general scholarship is generally about $2,000, or we have one for $3,000, we have one for the child of a single parent. So we're trying to do a lot of different things, and we just ask that this council continue to work with us. And as our previous Divine Nine have said, you know, lower the fees so they can help us out, so we can continue to help you out. And on top of that, Alpha was the first, and so we were the last tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you to each and every member of our community who came out to speak tonight. Again, please continue to do so, and your voice is tremendously important to the work that we do, and we need to hear it. So we'll now move on to other parts of the agenda. And one more change, I'm going to allow the interim executive officers' report before I do the chair's report. So I will yield the floor to Dr. Goldson for the interim chief executive officer's report.
Good evening, thank you so much for allowing me to go before the Chair of the Board. I had the pleasure of meeting Ms. Eleanor Kravitz yesterday at the second listening session at Bowie High School. And she did a phenomenal job yesterday in presenting her concerns for Benjamin Philloy and the need for an auditorium for her students. But yesterday, she also shared a pledge, and I wanted to provide her an opportunity this evening to share that same pledge that she shared with lots of community members on yesterday. So please, we're going to take a moment so Eleanor can provide that pledge at this time.
I am pledged to be a Floyd Falcon. I will fly high each day. I promise to do my best in every possible way. I will act with integrity and look at the world with perspective and awe. I will persevere and critically and creatively through each task, no matter how big or small. I'll be respectful and responsible. I'll do my bare back to the seed. I'll believe in myself and achieve.
Thank you for allowing me to let her go first. That same kind of pledge is a pledge that I definitely want to adopt while serving as the interim CEO for Prince George's County Public Schools. Thank you for attending our fifth Board of Education meeting for the 2018-2019 school year. I want to send a special thank you to our Office of Communications for creating the news break that we had this evening, which allowed us to highlight the community members who begin the process of hoping to create the village and wrap their arms around our students and staff. So thank you to Pepco, Burlington, and a variety of vendors who provided those school supplies so that our board member boroughs could distribute them to our new teachers. I also want to send a very special thank you to our sororities and fraternities who came this evening for their continued support in providing scholarships to a large number of students who are Prince George's County Public School graduates, who have the ability and opportunity to attend their post-secondary experience because of those financial scholarships. But I also want to thank them for the service that they provide that's beyond that monetary support, and that's the tutoring that they talked about, the supplies that they provide to our students in our least-served areas so that they can make sure that they're in school each and every day, ready to learn. Last night, as I stated earlier, we hosted our second community listening session, which was held at Bowie High School. And during those sessions, I briefly have an opportunity to share my goals and strategies for moving Prince George's County Public Schools forward, and then I focus on the opportunity to listen to our family and community members. During my opportunity of sharing those goals, I do want to highlight one, since we had our educators here this evening, and one of those goals is to create a compensation restoration task force. And I'm pleased to announce that that task force met for the very first time at the beginning of October. It's comprised of members from all of our labor partners, representatives from our Board of Education, and representatives from our county government. We're in the process of creating a request for proposal that will allow us to get an external vendor to come in and do an analysis of what that gap, how much that gap would be for the loss of salaries for all of our employees during 2009 to 2012, when we lost funds due to the sequestration. In addition, we'll be seeking our external vendor to provide us how much our teachers and staff and support staff are making in comparison to other local education agencies. We have a 90% retention rate, and it's important that we make sure that we retain every last one of our employees. We want 100%. As an employee who's been here for 27 years, compensation is important. It's not only important for our teachers, it's important for our support staff, our administrators, and we must retain quality educators to make sure that our students are prepared. That's a priority for not only myself, but our board members, and we will continue to strive to make sure that we begin the process of analyzing and determining what that gap is, and then finding funds to fill that gap. So thank you tonight for our educators for coming tonight to voice your concern, to make sure that we begin to close that gap and have conversations about how we can best do that. In addition to our community sessions, applications are currently being accepted for our secondary programs with dual enrollment components. That would be our 3D Scholars, our PTAC, and our Academy of Health Sciences. We also are beginning the process of accepting applications for our public charter schools. So please make sure our community members check our PGCPS website for additional information. The Fine Arts Office of the Maryland State Department of Education provided a professional development series for our Maryland vocal music teachers featuring gospel singer Donald Lawrence. The culminating event was for Mr. Donald Lawrence to have our vocal music teachers to perform with Mr. Donald Lawrence, but who gave the mass choir introduction where students from Bowie High School, Dr. Henry A. Wise Jr. High School, Frederick Douglass High School, and Oxon Hill High School. So it was a great pleasure for me to attend that Saturday session and see the mass choir who presented for representatives from the state of Maryland, who had the opportunity also to meet Donald Lawrence. This week has been identified as School Bus Safety Week across the state of Maryland. This event recognizes the scope and importance of safely transporting more than 630,000 students each day to Maryland public schools. Bus drivers contend with inclement weather, traffic snarls, and the ever-present danger of drivers who ignore those safety flashing lights. I please stress to our community members, when you see those lights, please come to a stop so that our students can safely board our school buses. This week, please be sure to drive safely, carefully, and note that not only just this week, but each and every day. PGCPS was presented with a proclamation from our Governor Larry Hogan to commemorate School Bus Safety Week, and we want to thank him. Prince George's County Public Schools will wear orange tomorrow as we commemorate Unity and National Bully Prevention Awareness Month. We encourage you to upload your photos to social media using the hashtag PGCPSUnityDay18. Congratulations to Arrowhead and High Bridge Elementary Schools, who were just two, who were two of just five schools in Maryland to be added to the America's Healthiest Schools List by the Alliance for Healthier Generations. Both schools earned the Bronze Level National Distinction by successfully meeting a rigorous set of criteria for serving healthier meals and snacks, offering high-quality health and physical education, and empowering school leaders to be healthy role models. For more student success stories and exciting things happening in Prince George's County Public Schools, please visit our website. We also encourage you to sign up for our PGCPS newsletter and check out our new Inside PGCPS blog to get behind the scenes with our students and our athletes. We also have on our main webpage PG13, which highlights some of our scholar-athletes. This concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Goldson. Well, now I'll move on to a brief report of the Chair. And I'll begin as always, we usually do this early. It is never too late. Always important to remember and honor our loved ones and our family members here in the PGCPS family. So I will ask you to join me in a moment of silence. I have three names here, but I'm sure there are others within our family who I want us to honor. The three that I have here are Sharon Dade, 5th grade educator at Excel Academy; Sylvester Rogers, transportation staff member; Anthony Hunter, educator at Columbia Park Elementary School. Our hearts and prayers go out to their families and to all who have been deeply impacted by their deaths. Please join me in a moment of silence honoring their lives and the impact their souls have left on our world. Thank you, my friends. Couple of other quick things, I have some great words to say about... Couple of the quick things, I have some great words to say about Britt Kerwin and the report, but I can't follow up any better than what he said and what my colleagues have added other than the fact that we will do just as Delegate Barron, not Barone, Barron, right? Delegate Barron told us to do. We will fight, assume that they're not going to do the right thing, and hold the state accountable for doing the right thing by our kids each and every day. And with Dr. Kerwin's help, and I definitely want to acknowledge Delegate Washington, who's on the commission, and Senator Pinsky, who fight for us every day on that commission as well. And so the only other thing I want to do is offer some kudos. I will just say that we'll offer some kudos to some folks for whom patience is a part of their daily job. So I thank them for being patient this evening as we got to this point. And Ms. Page is such a champion of our counselors that I've asked her to lead this recognition. Ms. Page?
Thank you. It is with great pleasure that I now recognize two of our schools for great counseling work they are doing. Calverton and Melwood Elementary Schools were recently awarded the Recognized American School Counselor Association Models Program Schools designated by the American School Counselor Association for aligning their schools' counseling programs with the ASCA model. These two schools are the first RAMP recognized schools in our district. Tonight, we have three counselors here that we would like to recognize for this moment to honor. Dr. Monique Lamar, the principal of Calverton Elementary School; Ms. Judith Pollock, professional school counselor at Calverton Elementary School; Mr. Andrew Dalton, principal of Melwood Elementary School; and Ms. LaShonda McFarland, professional school counselor at Melwood Elementary School. Can you guys come on down so we can take a picture?
Board members, come on up. Let's take a picture with these great folk. So just a couple of things to wrap up my report. Upcoming meetings. November 15, 2018 at 7:00 PM is our next board meeting. December 5, 2018 at 5:00 PM is the Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, meeting. And December 13, 2018 at 6:00 PM is the CEO's FYI 2020 Budget Presentation to the Board. All of these meetings will be held here at the SASSA Building in the boardroom. Persons interested in speaking at meetings of the board must register using our online registration tool found on the PGCPS website under the Boards tab. Click the Quick Links tab that reads Public Participation in Board Meetings and Hearings. Registrations are taken on a first-come, first-served basis, starting four days prior to the scheduled meeting, up until two and a half hours prior to the meeting's scheduled start time. For more information or if you don't have computer access, call 301-952-6115. That concludes my remarks. Mr. Burrows, you had something, some recognition?
Yes. I wanted to thank several organizations and individuals in the audience who helped with the New Teacher School Supply Drive. I want to thank you, Dr. Goldson, for all of your support. Could not have happened without that. I want to recognize the Brothers of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, Cap Epsilon Lambda, for generously contributing. I want to thank Justin Robinson, who spoke, the teacher from Samu Massey, who actually reached into his own pocket and showed up and gave to our first-year educators. And I also want to thank PGCEA for sending a lot of materials as well. And most importantly, I want to thank Ms. Thea Wilson, who organized mostly all of it. So I owe you lunch and so I will absolutely, I owe you money. Oh, I don't have money. But if I could give you a step, I would. But I don't hand out steps.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Again, that concludes my chair's report. We'll move on, as folks know, occasionally we get reports from committees of the board. And this evening, we have a report from the board's Ethics Panel. And so I would now like to invite up Mr. Gregory Morton, who is the chair of the Ethics Panel, to give a report of the board's Ethics Panel.
The Ethics Panel is an advisory body of the Board of Education, responsible for interpreting Board of Education Policy 0107, and advising persons subject to this policy regarding its application. Thank you for inviting the Ethics Panel here today. It is a privilege for me, as a parent of two students who were educated in the Prince George's County School System. I come before you today feeling proud and knowing that my children got an excellent education and were given the tools and necessities to continue their life journey and achieve long-term success. My service on this panel is about contributing what we can to continuous improvement and success of the school system and its students. I'd like to acknowledge my fellow panel members. They're here tonight. The Ethics Panel consists of eight active members, four primary and four alternates. Can you guys stand? I would like to also take this opportunity to thank my fellow panel members for their As you know, success is a team sport. Success is seldom achieved individually. On that note, I would also like to acknowledge and thank our partners for their confidence, support, and guidance. Today, we want to offer some perspective on the Universal Ethics Challenge. We would also like to back that with some solid strategies for increasing our awareness of and commitment to ethics as we move forward. The commitment to ethics alone is not going to make our school system all it can be. But ethics is a critical core of the foundation for making our school system all it can be. So, how do we move forward? What are the tenets of a sound ethics program? It begins with our vision and purpose. I want to go through that for you today and also want to provide you an update on the status of our current program in terms of cases, activities, and how we work as a panel. The focus today is pointing the way forward, looking ahead. The challenge we have with ethics today is creating an environment where every stakeholder within the system, our students, our teachers, our staff, and parents, is confident and comfortable in saying something if they see something. This simple edict is the key to facilitating a safe ethics environment that is also dedicated to the learning environment. Always doing the right thing can be uncomfortable. But we have to teach people how to be comfortable with the uncomfortable if we are to continue to get better every day and make our commitment to ethics the best it can be. All of us working together have a responsibility to make this happen by providing an infrastructure for that to occur. Vision. Ethics elevated to its important role as a key element empowering the ongoing success of the Prince George's County School System. Our commitment to ethics must be one that serves as the glue between what we know to be right and actually doing what's right. That commitment must elevate ethics to its rightful role as essential for our success in Prince George's County Schools. To accomplish this, we must establish a vision and a direction, acknowledging the journey forward is not always a straight line. And yet, the commitment must always remain to the vision and the purpose. The ethics purpose, to promote the highest level of ethical conduct on the part of all persons associated with the Prince George's County Public School System, ensuring transparency and accountability, promoting the highest public confidence, maintaining an atmosphere of impartiality and independent judgment, providing guidance to members of the Board of Education, school employees, and the community concerning ethics and ethics-related matters. Let's take a look at purpose. When it comes to our purpose, it means attention to ethics at every level of the school system. It must be as important to the staff and the CEO's office as it is to the cleaning crew working after hours to give the schools a shine. It must be important to our parents and students at all times, not just when something happens. In terms of our purpose and why we are here, why we exist, our role is to engage with the board in endorsing a robust ethics agenda that makes it natural for the members of the school system to promote it every day and every way. This summary, this is a summary of the number of advisory activities or actions regarding a complaint. Each case was acted upon by the panel as required by law. When a case makes its way to the panel for action, usually via board counsel, the panel schedules a meeting to review the requests and associated facts. Depending on the specifics of the request, the panel meets either in person or via conference call. Policy 107 is our primary guide as we deliberate issues. With the assistance of board counsel, to keep us on track, the panel reviews the facts and makes a decision. Decisions of the panel are established by a quorum of panel members, primary, and alternates as required. The Ethics Panel availability as a resource is impacted by the limited promotion of the Ethics Panel and the associated services. In preparing this report, our focus was on getting better. We are always asking, how do we get better? Getting better means transparency, process, accountability, and training. Let's take a couple of minutes to look more closely at each of these four areas. Transparency. The tools of transparency in the internet age have to include accessibility of the resources of the enterprise via the web. Improving access to policy documents and providing FAQs that explain the process would build confidence with the public. Process. A well-documented process is as important to the success of an organization as the underlying policies they support. Today's billion-dollar enterprises address the policy management process through the use of enterprise resource management technologies. These technologies automate business processes to include standard ways to access and submit documents, the ability to track and manage process flow, and easy accessibility to historical results and records. The Prince George's County School System is a billion-dollar enterprise. Accountability. To assure accountability, we need to always be asking, why do we do things the way we do them? Do our current practices make sense? How can we improve? A system-wide review of existing ethics policies would serve to reconcile sometimes competing policies, remove redundancies, provide an opportunity to incorporate updates based on evolving public policy. And training. When you know better, you do better. This common quote underlies every parent's motivation for educating their children. This lesson is universal and applies to all of us. Establishing system-wide ethics training would assure we do better. We get better when we make sure we have the tools in place to measure our success. Policy accompanied by process is the path to success. Through training, we must educate our workforce that ethics is as much about appearance as it is staying within the bounds of the law. We recommend creation or upgrade of existing training materials, in-person ethics training as part of the onboarding process for all new employees, annual online ethics compliance training for all employees, and regular review of lessons learned and publication of FAQs that aid internal and public perception of Prince George's County Public Schools' commitment to ethics. Ethics is knowing the difference between what you have a right to do and what is right As I said earlier, policy accompanied by process is the path to success. To reiterate my message tonight, I really want us to look ahead to what we can and should be when it comes to ethics. The recommendations in this report are offered as an application of the Ethics Panel's commitment to ongoing success of our school system and our desire to make it better every day. What does success look like? Well, unambiguous commitment by the school board to principals communicated in this report. Appointment of a dedicated resource to establish project plans for the implementation of the panel's recommendations. A cultural shift that encourages dialogue regarding ethics and ethical behavior as a comfortable part of every decision. A workplace that is perceived as committed to always doing the right thing. Active review and tracking of concerns raised and resolutions accomplished. Establishment of metrics that allow proactive identification and resolution of issues. An environment where student achievement is the ultimate reward for the work that we do. A workforce trained on ethics, operating towards a shared vision, and committed to getting better every day. When we talk about improving our classrooms, increasing the commitment of our teachers, administrators, and facilitating greater involvement from our parents and communities, ethics is the common thread that runs through all of these other roads to success. In closing, I would like to summarize some key recommendations from the panel. Clearly, we have thought this through and we need your support. What we offer is built around improving What does success look like? Well, unambiguous commitment by the school board to principals communicated in this report. Appointment of a dedicated resource to establish project plans for the implementation of the panel's recommendations. A cultural shift that encourages dialogue regarding ethics and ethical behavior as a comfortable part of every decision. A workplace that is perceived as committed to always doing the right thing. Active review and tracking of concerns raised and resolutions accomplished. Establishment of metrics that allow proactive identification and resolution of issues. An environment where student achievement is the ultimate reward for the work that we do. A workforce trained on ethics, operating towards a shared vision, and committed to getting better every day. When we talk about improving our classrooms, increasing the commitment of our teachers, administrators, and facilitating greater involvement from our parents and communities, ethics is the common thread that runs through all of these other roads to success. In closing, I would like to summarize some key recommendations from the panel. Clearly, we have thought this through and we need your support. What we offer is built around improving website access, online process flow and incident tracking, and establishing training. We are recommending a three-pronged approach. Access and transparency through an upgraded and updated website, building an effective online process flow and incident tracking system, and training both online and in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morton and members of our ethics panel. I'll note that when the ethics panel came in to do this presentation, in my conferment with board counsel and board's executive director, we felt that this report and these recommendations should be shared with our Policy, Legal, and Legislative Committee for review and advice of the board so that we can spend a little more time working on that. I'll note that when we do these types of presentations, this is not a general discussion item. We want to give information, but in our, in our frame of flexibility, it looks like, Ms. Ahmed, that you have, you may, so if this, if it's something that's quick and easy or if it's something that's substantive, then you can note it for the, for the budget, for the policy committee as well.
It's quick and easy, Chairman Ubanks. Chairman Morton, thank you so much for giving this presentation to us. If, if an employee wanted to come to you, come to the ethics panel for an advisory opinion, how would they get to you?
That's an excellent question. We have received cases from letters. We have received cases that have come through the hotline. We have received cases that, that came in from county government, people going to county government to, to report things and is sneaking back to us. Board counsel does a great job of assimilating those and getting them to us, but the point that I'm making here is that we need to establish a better process that's more accessible so that it's easy for people to figure out how to get their questions to us.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Morton. I would, I would ask that the policy committee look at that process. I thought that maybe this could be something that the public could know because in policy it says that it's open for employees and other folks. So I just want to be sure that we are addressing that you are accessible to all the people per policy.
A lot of what's in here is talks, is really talking about improving our visibility and the process flow so that we can get better at what we do.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ahmed. And again, thank you, Ethics Committee, and thank you for the tremendously important work that you do and for this important work this evening. All right, we'll move on to several of the business items that we have before us, and I will start with item 4.0, which is the board's consent agenda. And I will yield the floor to Dr. Goldson for an introduction of items 4.1 and 4.2 under the consent agenda.
Items 4.1 and 4.2 requires board approval of proclamations commemorating School Psychology Awareness Week, which is November 12th through the 16th, and National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, which is November 10th through the 18th.
Thank you, colleagues. May I have a motion to approve items 4.1 and 4.2 under the consent agenda?
Second.
It has been moved to second. Mr. Burrows.
My question's for Dr. Watts. Last year, maybe two years ago, I had a real concern about students going to school hungry, cafeteria, employees throwing out tons of food, and there, there was nothing for students who were not farm to get meals if they didn't have money. And it was a real concern at the middle school level. And I know there were, you know, you mentioned that you were going to work on this. What was the status of that?
So, Mr. Burrows, Food Services established a policy where children would go, they would, they would be fed. There, there is no policy right now around food being thrown out. There was a, you know, we had a conversation yesterday in the listening session, a concern about food being wasted, students not wanting all the material, the food that was on their plate. But there is a procedure and a policy around children being fed. And I don't, I don't know, Dr. Goldson, if you want to add to the...
So, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, so right now, if a student who is not farm, does not have money, they can go and they will be fed a meal. Okay, well, thank you for following up on that and fixing that issue because that's going to mean so much to so many students. And I would like to work with you moving forward. There are several organizations in the county and the DMV that work with restaurants and university kitchens so that at the end of the day, when there is leftover food, we can give it to either homeless shelter, we can give it to our students. You know, we have high poverty in certain areas, but we can make the most of that instead of the current practice, and that's just throwing it away.
Yes, sir, I agree.
I'm sure Ms., Dr. Watts would love to work with you, but now Mr. Barry Stanton is in charge of Food Services. So I'm sure you'll be able to meet, converse, and discuss ways that we can save food and support our homeless community.
Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no one else, I will put the vote before you to approve items 4.1 and 4.2 under the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. Thank you. That motion carries. We'll move on to item 5.0, the budget consent agenda. I'll yield the floor to Dr. Goldson for an introduction of items 5.1 through 5.14 under the budget consent agenda.
Items 5.1 through 5.14 requires board approval of contract ratification for the Service Employees International Union, the November 2018 expenditure requirements, a feasibility study for Woodmore Elementary School, an air conditioning initiative at Duval High School, Thurgood Marshall Middle School, and High Point High School, piping replacement at Kenneworth Elementary School and Seabrook Elementary School, final acceptance and payment for work at Duval High School and Nicholas Orme Middle School, a change order for work at Fairmont Heights High School, an award of software support and training services, approval of Third Amendment contract for administrative services, and contract approval for alternative school construction financing advisory services.
Thank you. Do you want to separate out 5.1 or you want to, you want to just take them all? Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve items 5.1 through 5.14 under the budget consent agenda. It's moved and seconded. Ms. Ahmed.
Oh, yes, I just, sorry. I just wanted to thank all of the folks from the Woodmore and Fairwood communities that are here. I was able to be a part of the feasibility study process, as Delegate Barron had mentioned earlier, and I went to all but one meeting. And so I really appreciate the process in which this decision was, came forward for the Woodmore-Fairwood site. And I did have a few questions for administration on the last couple of items that are on the budget agenda, budget consent agenda. Could you please advise, there's especially the last one, on the alternative school construction financing advisory services? That's a price tag of $423,000. And I just want to be sure, is that, are we good with funding that? And what are we aiming to get? Because I see that there were four bids, and this is the bid that we chose. I just want to get some, some consolation that this is something solid, that we want to go forward, that we have budgeted, and that will provide value for our system.
Yes, Ms. Ahmed, yes, we have, actually, there was a total of nine bids that we got in. The final four were selected on technical services. And while 423 was not the lowest price that we got, it was within $5,000 of the lowest price that we got in. And so we had a very robust review period, and it involved both the county council representatives, the representative from OMB, and the money that we're utilizing is within our budget for planning.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know we're going to try to do a ceremony for 5.01, but I wanted to just personally thank the administration and the members of SCIU Local 400, President Selman included. I met with them earlier today. I know we're working out the logistics on doing a SCIU day in, day in the life with board members. So, board members, I invite you to join me in that initiative to walk in the shoes of members of our support team. Often times, before our students even hit the schools or even hit the buses, a lot of custodial staff are cleaning those schools day and night. So I thank them very much for their service, and thank you, President Selman, for your, for your service to the county. I yield back.
Thank you. Mr. Burrows.
Can you explain item 5.13?
Yes. Item 5.13 is an amendment for administrative services related to procurement. We had a number of administrative services that are provided to us through Brailsford and Dunleavy, and they've provided a lot of things. If you might remember, they're the ones that produced our, our master review of the facilities a long time ago. And so they continue to provide us some administrative services. In this case, they're helping us with construction procurement. And so because we are in the process of trying to get a lot of our projects through so that we don't have an emergency issue at the end of May, we've utilized their augmented staff to help us with procurement.
So you don't currently have the staff to do this?
No.
Dr. Goldson, I'm getting a little concerned about the constant need for contracts to do work that we all to be able to do ourselves. So, even with the composition task force, you mentioned that we were going out to get a contractor to do it, but we have millions of dollars of HR personnel here. So, I wanted to raise that concern to you because if we have teams of professionals in place, we need to make sure they have the capacity to do what we need them to do so that we're not constantly hiring contractors.
So in this case, let me first refer to the Brailsford and Dunleavy request. In an effort to make sure that we get all of our projects out in a timely fashion and to make sure that they're such that when we submit them for final approval, that they are in compliance with what the county council and what the state needs in order to provide us the funds. What we, we are reaching out to an external vendor to assist in doing that piece, knowing that we have a large number of projects and a backlog in maintenance and renovations that need to be done. What's important to note, though, is that we do have a procurement staff, but we don't have anyone specifically designated solely to deal with our CIP program. What I have requested of Mr. Matlock, and he most recently provided, is what we need so that we are up to par and can handle it ourselves so that we don't have to go out for bid to get external support to do the work that you're correct, we should be able to do inside an organization this large. That would mean that we'd have to look at ways that we could take additional funds from our capital improvement program to support those additional positions, host them, recruit, apply, and get someone in to do that piece. As we all know, that process could take us approximately two to three months. When we're on the construction renovation cycle, we don't have two to three months' time because we want to make sure everything is ready and to go the minute that our students leave the schoolhouse on the last day of school so that construction renovations can begin. So it's my hope that we won't have to continue to present these, that we will present to you a more comprehensive plan where we can utilize CIP funds so that we can get the positions in capital improvement so we don't have to go externally. So I agree. A more fiscally responsible approach is for us to begin to hire so that we don't have to spend a reoccurring cost.
Thank you.
Sorry, let me go to the second one. I didn't acknowledge the second piece on the Compensation Restoration Task Force. What's extremely important is that we're, we're on a time crunch in terms of being able to make sure that we get an analysis back in a timely fashion and what's one that's also going to be credible to our community. Our team, when we met, the task force, they came up with several recommendations. We presented a draft, RFP, but then we also added additional items. That request for proposals is going to be divided into three categories. The restoration component of it is what's really dire and important because we've been talking about it for a year now. And so we want to make sure that it's on the forefront of making sure that we utilize the external vendor to get that information. But then it also is important that we look at making sure that, as stated in our current commission report, that we pay teachers and that it's comparable to other local education agencies, and that we are providing them the salary that they need that's comparable to the work that they do each and every day. So that's the second component of it. I would hate to take away from the efforts of our own staff as we're still continuing to recruit and fill positions, not only for this year, but we're also beginning the process to prepare for that recruitment process for the FY 18, for the 2019-20 school year.
Yeah, I understand. It just seems like, you know, a whole division of HR should be able to work with the budget office to figure out how many steps, how much it would cost to restore steps. But, you know, I understand if your current staff, they're working to hire for vacancies now and in the future, but I just hope that this will be the last time we would have to hire someone to do this math equation.
Well, it's a little bit more than just a math equation, having been a mathematics educator, so I do know that. And I think that this work is extremely important. And so I know that our commitment to making sure that we close that gap for our teachers is worth us making this investment to make sure we get the correct information and we get it right.
Thank you. Ms. Ahmed.
Oh, yes, I just wanted to piggyback off of what Mr. Burrows had talked about with the contractors and the immense amount of funds that we're putting into contracting. I was recently made aware, as before this board meeting, that there, as part of the Washington Area Boards of Education report, it shows that we have significantly less school-based positions as compared to our neighboring county of Montgomery County. I just did the calculation. Well, it looks like Montgomery County, according to this report, has 18,517 school-based positions, and we have 13,701. And so for me, that's a huge gap. If we don't have the, if we're contracting out so much, why aren't we taking, like, why isn't that money going to fund the folks that, in our system that can do the work? And why can't we close down on the gap to be able to fund our school-based positions more? I think it's all a cascading effect, and my concern is that when there are so many school-based resources in our neighboring county, what are we losing out on because we're going to contractors for our central office work that should be done by central office employees?
Thank you for sharing. We'll also do our own analysis of where we sit. It's important to know that when we compare Prince George's County to Montgomery County, their budget is a little larger than ours and the size of their jurisdiction. They are the largest in the state of Maryland. And so I appreciate the comparison piece. I do want to make sure that our board members know that we, I agree that we have to be fiscally responsible. And I am going line by line in every budget for every division to make sure that we are spending our taxpayers' money appropriately.
And I do appreciate that, Dr. Goldson. I know that, I have had this, this thought of wanting to have a zero-based budget, and I know that the process that you're going through right now is very, is similar to that in going line by line to make sure that you're justifying every single cost. So please continue to do that and be the fiscal steward that we need for our system,
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I will put the vote before you for items 5.1 through 5.14 under the budget consent agenda. Ms. Wilson, please call the roll.
Ms. Ahmed.
Aye.
Ms. Boston.
Aye.
Mr. Burrows.
Abstained.
Ms. Ubanks.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Ms. Cantaro-Scready.
Aye.
Mr. Valentine.
Mr. Wallace.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Dr. Wiseman.
Dr. Ubanks.
Ten ayes, one abstention.
Thank you. That motion carries. Are we going to bring, bring up our, our colleagues who've been, speaking of patience, if I could, please bring up our... Speaking of patients, if I could, please bring up our colleagues from SEIU Local 400, and let's sign a contract.
Yes. So, Dr. Eubanks, we'll do a ceremonial signing. It has the Board Action Summary and a document, and then we'll do a picture. I know Mrs. Selman has members of his board as well who may want to participate.
Yes, Ms. Selman, please bring up, and any members of your board you want to come, want to come up, please have them come right on up.
Trying to get home by 11. Making millions at 11, come on. Hey, if I, if I hit it, I'm done. I'm a paper suit in high school, man, I'm done.
Ladies and gentlemen, follow-up items, now, item 7.0, follow-up items from the September 18, 2018 Board Meeting, and the October 18, 2018 Board Work Session are posted in Board Docs. Colleagues, I have a motion to approve actions taken in executive session on Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education hereby approve items taken in executive session on October 23rd, 2018 as follows. Legal matters, personnel appointments, and student appeals. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Colleague, that, colleagues, that motion carries. Colleagues, that concludes our agenda, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. It has been moved and seconded to adjourn, seeing no further discussion on that issue. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All administration officials opposed, please say no. Okay, well, I guess that motion passes then, and we are adjourned. Have a great evening.[1745.13][1745.13](APPLAUSE).